All my talking points are all focused around the...
Stay in town?
Yeah.
I'm doing well, how are you doing? Good.
...
The December 20th, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Falls Church High School Jaguar Marching Band under the direction of Stephen Jacoby. Mr. Jacoby, fantastic. Thank you so much to all of you from the Falls Church Marching Band. Ms. Evans, do you want to say anything?
Yes, I just want to say congratulations. That was absolutely fabulous, and we so appreciate you being here with us tonight. Well done.
Excellent, excellent. The Board held a closed meeting earlier this evening, and certified compliance must be taken upon reconvening in public. But I want to let everybody know in the audience that we will be going back into closed session a few moments after we do the regular part of the meeting. And so I will, a few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, in order to comply with Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on December 20th, 2018, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Schultz, all those in favor. And that motion is unanimous with Ms. Palchuk, Ms. Hines away. Okay. And Ms. Keys-Gamar away from the table. Ms. Hines is at the table. Okay. So a few other announcements. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cell phones. I call on Mr. Tigner for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the last Board meeting of the year. So, National Mentoring Month, January 2019. National Mentoring Month highlights mentoring and the positive impact it can have on young lives. This month-long outreach campaign focuses national attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us, individuals, businesses, government agencies, schools, faith, communities, and nonprofits, can work together to increase the number of mentors and assure brighter futures for our young people. Positive relationships between mentors and their mentees have been shown to encourage young people to stay in school, achieve personal growth, believe in themselves, and live up to their potential. National Mentoring Month marks its 18th anniversary in 2019 with a theme "In Real Life," focuses on the real-life benefits of mentoring for young people, as well as the life-changing stories shared by mentors and themselves.
I actually should turn this over to you, I believe, Mr. Moon.
Chairman Corbin Sanders for the recognition.
Virginia is home to over 73,000 military-connected school-age students, more than any other state in the nation. All our Fairfax County public schools proudly welcome and support over 11,000 military-connected youth and their families who are part of our school community. Tonight, we are honoring 14 of our schools who have been awarded the Purple Star designation. At this time, I would like to recognize Colonel Greenberg, Garrison Commander of the Fort Belvoir Military Installation. Colonel Greenberg, will you please join me at the podium? Absolutely. Um, let me just finish a little bit. This year, the-- Oh, it's the hand. Hello? Is it working? Okay. This year, the Virginia Department of Education established the Purple Star designation to be awarded to military-friendly schools that have demonstrated a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. Criteria established for the award were designed to increase educator awareness of military-connected youth and help schools structure their support to and for military-connected youth and their families. Schools that earned this prestigious designation received a resolution from the Virginia State Superintendent Dr. James Lane and a special Purple Star recognition to display at their school. The Purple Star Award serves to set each of these schools apart for the hard work of the faculty, students, parents, and community partners who stand together to ensure that our military-connected students are supported academically, behaviorally, and emotionally during their transitions. We thank the FCPS school staff and students from these 14 schools for the warm welcome to their military-connected students, and we thank our military families for keeping our nation strong and safe. So now I would like to hand the mic over to Colonel Greenberg for a few words.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, but thank you for allowing us the opportunity to recognize our 14 schools. A lot of work has gone into prepping and getting the Purple Star designation, and I appreciate really the county's support in all the initiatives that we've started up over these last couple months and the continued relationship that we share throughout the years. A special thanks also to our school liaison officers, Wendy O'Sullivan and Jamie Alberts, who really works with the schools. 14 is a huge number, and hopefully next year, we can share best business practices and get more and more schools in Fairfax County the same Purple Star designation. And so, without turning it back over, but again, appreciate you allowing us, the Command Sergeant Major and myself, to come out today. Just a small token of our appreciation, we're presenting certificates of appreciation to those 14 schools. Again, just a very small token of appreciation on behalf of Fort Belvoir and really the military community and families. So, thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Greenberg. For those of you who don't know, it has been a wonderful addition to Fort Belvoir for you to take over as the Garrison Commander. We really look at this as a very strong partnership with you, and we appreciate all of your leadership in this area. So what I'm going to do is ask my colleagues from the Board to come up onto the dais, or not the dais, but the risers, and then we will call each school by name, and they will come up and get their certification and get a picture taken. And if anybody would like to make a couple of comments, please go ahead and do so. I see that Ms. Schultz would.
I just want to say to you schools who are military-friendly, I just counted up. I was in one school in kindergarten, another school in first grade, another school in second grade, another school for third and fourth grade, a different school for fifth grade, two different schools in sixth grade, a different school in seventh grade, a different school in eighth grade, one school for ninth and 10th grade, and one school for 11th and 12th grade. And so I was a beneficiary of living in a military family and having great both public and parochial schools. It does matter. You make a difference to the families who cycle in and cycle out of your communities. And I just truly thank you as a military-connected youth who's now all grown up. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to let you all go through. And I'm also going to ask the audience members who are associated with each of these schools to come up when we announce them, and the two parent liaisons who actually serve all of our students, if you all want to come up and join us at the risers to welcome each school, that would be great. Yeah. I'm sorry, school liaisons, I apologize. So the first school that we are calling is Claremont Elementary School. And I would like to recognize Principal Ann Stokowski for being here tonight with Claremont. Thank you. So let's go ahead and get a picture taken there. Claremont and who? Now we have Collin Powell Elementary, Principal Jamie Lowerson. Flint Hill Elementary with Principal Jennifer Hertzberg. Now I'm going to call two schools together, because they really are one dream team. Fort Belvoir Primary with Principal Margot Pareja, and Fort Belvoir Upper with Principal Jamie Chianetta. Hayfield Secondary with Principal Martin Grimm. Hunt Valley Elementary with Principal David Free. Lane Elementary with Principal Eleanor Contreras. Lane Elementary with Principal Eleanor Contreras. the school psychologist and military family liaison. Oh, and Jen Lambert as well. And I'm going to ask my colleagues to stay in place after this photo, because we have a couple of more recognitions. Team, who received a Team Excellence Award from FCPS in October. These three community partners from the team are recognized for their significant contributions to the work of FCPS in support of our military-connected youth and families. At this time, I invite Wendy O'Sullivan, Jamie Albers, and Dr. Jennifer Drake Patrick to come to the front of the risers, so you can be recognized. Also joining us at this evening is Dan Dunham. Mr. Dunham currently serves as the Military Student and Family Specialist at the Virginia Department of Education. Under his leadership, the Commonwealth became the second state in the nation to present the Purple Star Award to schools in recognition of their support to military-connected youth. Our 14 schools are among the 59 in the Commonwealth receiving this honor. Mr. Dunham also leads the Military Student Support Process Action Team. Mr. Dunham, if you would come forward, we'd like to take a photo with you and the rest of the board.
So if you could all come in and angle your bodies, so we can fit more people, and we'll fill in on the left-hand side. If there's any room up on the risers, that would be great to see a little bit more. Here, more. I'm completely losing Jane. She go up. Okay. Looking right here. Okay, this looks good. Nice big smiles. We're going to take three for me and three for him. Okay, looking right here, nice big smiles. Hold up those four. Do you just see it? Okay, looking right here, one, two, big, big smiles, three.
So ladies and gentlemen, I do want to, before you leave tonight, have one special recognition to Barb Gibbs. Barb has been fantastic in putting together tonight's program, and so thank you very much, Barb. We appreciate it. The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, three citizens have signed up to address the board. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum... Excuse me, folks. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. Our first speaker is Parker Brown.
Gentlemen and women of the school board, my name is Parker Brown, a student at West Springfield High School, and I'm here tonight to discuss the proposed changes to Policy 8335. Seeing as I'm the only one talking about this topic tonight, it's very clear that it's not exactly a hot-button issue. Nevertheless, the modifications to cell tower management and construction in FCPS is a very important issue. While the vast majority of the proposed changes to Policy 8335 are indeed great, there is a grave problem, I believe, found in Section 3 Philosophy, Subsection D, with a proposed prohibition of cell tower construction on elementary school grounds, and amendment has also been suggested to ban cell towers on middle school grounds. I ask, to what end? Other counties, such as Prince George's just across the Potomac, generate hundreds of thousands of dollars from cell tower leases every year, for the minute cost of leasing land the school system is not even using. FCPS, like so many other school districts around it, could receive significant sums for financing our education network. Why is FCPS to close the door on this great economic opportunity? We all remember the $100 million budget shortfall, how teachers were laid off as class sizes were enlarged yet again last year, and how students are now being effectively taxed $50 a year to simply participate in their extracurricular activities. It is clear that our school system needs more streams of revenue, yet a portion of this policy will close a portion of it off. While there are specious reports of health risks stemming from cell towers, if this is a health-issue topic, shouldn't cell towers be banned on all schools, not just elementary schools? The policy cannot have it both ways. I implore you all to consider these words and to please send this proposal back to a work session for amendments so FCPS will not abandon yet another source of revenue for its ever-empty coffers. Thank you, and may you all have a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Merry Christmas to you as well. Now I have Kevin Hickerson.
Good evening, Chairman Corbett Sanders, school board members, Dr. Bray Brandon and staff. I'm Kevin Hickerson, President of the Fairfax Education Association, and I want to wish each of you a happy holidays and a prosperous, safe new year. Tonight, I'm going to be brief. So Governor Northam has made education a priority for the upcoming session. He has put more money into salaries, wants to reduce the burden placed upon our councilors, and he wants to improve safety in our public schools. This was made possible and due, in part, due to the efforts of the Virginia Education Association's lobbying efforts over the last six months. We are proud to do this work and will continue to do so, but we need help. As the largest school district in Virginia, we can put a lot of weight behind whatever changes are being proposed that will help fund our schools. What we can do together to amplify our voices in Fairfax to give children, all the children in Virginia, access to a world-class education while also lifting up our school system as well, what can we do? We have to expand the financial pie so that everybody gets a bigger slice. The Fairfax Education Association wants to be a partner with FCPS and community advocates advocating for the governor's proposed changes, so that we can all benefit. As part of our statewide lobby day, we will be taking part in a rally on January 28th to tell the legislature that they must pass the governor's proposals. I invite you and the community to join us. Now, I know that's the same day as the FCPS budget hearing. Getting back and forth to Richmond might be a tall task, especially considering lovely I-95, but I'm asking you and the community to join us. Wear red for ed and support all of us in making our voices heard. Again, happy holidays, and I'll see you in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickerson, and happy holidays to you as well. We now have Agnes Mallard.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the school board, Dr. Bray Brandon. Thank you. I'm here because I have just learned in the last little more than a week about a change in the responsibility for the custodial cleaning contract for evening cleaning of admin buildings. I'm an FCPS employee in an admin building and have had a wonderful relationship with custodians over the years, who have worked a full-time job, often in FCPS schools, and then come to clean my building at the end of their day. It's my understanding that the contract has ended, or will end, at the end of December, and that FCPS facilities has decided to take over that responsibility. I applaud the action to go away from outsourcing the workers' jobs, as we are all trying to commit ourselves to a living wage for all workers in Fairfax County, and I believe that Fairfax County Public Schools to be a much better employer than many of the contracted employers that I have heard of. I understand that there has been some concern about the handling of this particular contract, but I have two particular concerns. One is for my coworker, who does work a full 40-hour work job for Fairfax County and then come to my building. She will no longer be able to work her evening job that her family depends upon, because she is a current FCPS employee. And when FCPS becomes the employer, January 1, she will not be eligible to continue that job. She's had less than two weeks' notice that tomorrow will be her last day in this evening job, and I know that wasn't the intent of this change, but that is a situation that I believe she is not alone in. My questions to you, and I hope that it can be the case that these employees who have been contacted by FCPS facilities and offered the opportunity to apply to work starting in January, it's my understanding that they've been told they will not be eligible for benefits. And I question how that can be, because it is now the case that under circumstances of term of work, FCPS hourly employees are eligible under some conditions for... of term of work, FCPS hourly employees are eligible, under some conditions, for benefits. And it was told to me, this is not firsthand information, that the position in our building would not come with the opportunity for benefits. So I would like to find out, and I will try to do some homework too, about that situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Millard. I now call on Mr. Tigner for Student Representative Matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. I would like to touch on a topic that I spoke at, at the Virginia Region 4 Virginia Student Council Association Workshop that was actually run out of South Lakes High School this last Saturday. And I was presenting to these students, and they're from all across Northern Virginia, about the typical teenager and how we're perceived in modern-day society and what that perception does to us in the context of identity and individuality. The general perception of your teenager sort of runs along the lines of moody, irritable, defensive, tough to sort of work with, and it's a common thing, but we sort of question it, is that always true? And no, of course it isn't. There's exceptions. You have your good days, you have your bad days, but that's still the perception, and we wanted to question why. And it came down to, what is the one thing that every teenager has to do in the United States? And that is go to school. And, all right, well, what does that have to do with this? Well, it comes down to a very interesting thing, and that is sleep. Everybody does it, but do we get enough of it? What are the signs of sleep deprivation, not getting enough sleep? Well, surprised, irritability, moodiness, defensiveness, not being able to work with others, it's the exact same thing. So why is it like that? Well, it comes down to a lot of different factors, but at least for Fairfax County, something that we brought up was homework. And there's a lot of homework. If you go on FCPS website, there is a statement about the two-hour homework policy for all classes combined per night in high school. That's not really a thing that's met. If you're a high school student, you know what I'm talking about. If you're a middle school student, you might even know what I'm talking about. And it's something that's overlooked. Every student I've told about this rule, they've never heard about it, they don't know what it is, they don't know it's a thing. Some teachers don't know it's a thing, most of them do, but that doesn't mean they discuss it with their students. And it should be an open dialogue. Hey, the teacher assigned an assignment, and hey, was that too much? Was that too little? Should we find that balance somewhere? And that's important, is that balance? If your student spends three hours on homework and comes the next day tired, they can't pay attention to the next lesson, and they got to spend more time on that homework that next day, and it just compounds over and over again. So it's a very interesting thing to at least question. Is that something that students are aware of, right? As the recommendation of two hours of homework per night for all classes, is that something that students are comfortable with having a dialogue with their teacher? Personally, me, even though that I know about it, I wouldn't be comfortable talking to my teacher about it. I wouldn't feel comfortable telling them, hey, that was too much homework, because their immediate response is, hey, this is an advanced class. Well, even in the wording, it says it should have nothing to do with that, but still, they feel justified to do it. And I think we're missing the mentality of, this is a school system as a whole that needs to come together. Hey, just because you're teaching that IB class or that AP class doesn't mean you can rise above the rest of them. We're all in this together, right? So we should all be working towards this final goal of making sure kids have time at night to get sleep, right? And once you're past that sort of stage, it's amazing, the respect that you get from people around you and how easy it is to work with other people, the effect a good night's rest gets for even a kid, right, let alone an adult, is absolutely amazing. And for example, in Europe, they have less sit times. In the place where I had an internship at for per week in classes, I believe it was about 20 to 25 hours. We have 35 hours here, and the average kid there, I believe, is perceived at least as a young adult. And that was immediately understood the first time I had interaction with an adult at my internship. It was respect. You're a young adult. Perhaps you might not have as much experience, but you're still on the same level playing field. And I think that's an amazing thing that we should be able to work towards, and I think a good way to tackle that would be that two-hour homework policy. So I talked to Superintendent Advisory Counsel about it last week and sort of presented that this was an idea. And these are the kids who are most involved in our county. They're absolutely sane, four from every high school. They also didn't know about it. And we decided something we'd like to at least address in our presentation to the superintendent at the end of the year. So I believe that might be a topic that's brought up in that presentation. And I've also talked to all the different student representatives to the citizen advisory committees. We meet once a month, and this has been the topic that we've decided we'd like to focus on for the year, at least to spread advocacy and understanding to different students that this is something that their teachers in them should be discussing at least openly. So hopefully, we can advocate for that two-way flow of information and keep it sort of coming, and that's something we strive towards. I know the student use survey provides some nice numbers on how that two-hour homework policy is not met per night for our students. So I think we should at least utilize those statistics and the information we have to make a positive impact on that unique front. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tigner. So the fiscal year 2020 to 2024 Capital Improvement Program, I call on Dr. Braybrand for the introduction.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. We're pleased to bring you our Capital Improvement Program for 2020 to 2024, and I have the great honor and high privilege of introducing to you our Assistant Superintendent for the Department of Facilities and Transportation, Mr. Jeff Plattenberg, who will begin the presentation. I do want to remind folks that we will have an opportunity to have a work session on these topics and really get able to ask additional comments and questions. We're really trying to just give a high-level presentation tonight and deal with deeper questions and follow-up at the work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Braybrand. I'm going to be consolidating both this 4.03 item and item 4.04, the membership analysis and trends, as it's a consolidation and mirroring of actually both of those items. What I'd like to do is thank you for giving me this opportunity, actually, to present to you this evening, the FY 2020 to 2024 Capital Improvement Program. But before I begin, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank and recognize some really incredible people that are all the work that goes behind some of these presentations and also the data gathering and so forth, with Mr. Kevin Snead, who's over here, Special Projects Administrator, and Jessica Gillis, the Director of the Office of Planning Services. And of course, I see Francine Furby, our Director of Transportation, who's always up well early in the morning, supporting her colleagues and other staff members. I can't thank them enough for all of the work that they're doing. There are two of those, they're all amazing, talented employees, but Mr. Snead and Ms. Gillis are amazing. And of course, the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Marty Smith, also known as the Face of Operations, for all of his support in our preparation and really getting this preparation, this presentation really honed in. This Capital Improvement Program proposes three new elementary schools from the next five-year horizon through FY 2024. Northwest County area in the vicinity of Route 28 and the Dulles Airport Access Road, which is funded. The Fairfax Oakton area, which is partially funded, the design. The Silverline Metro Innovation Center Station area, which is unfunded. To meet the needs beyond the five-year horizon, the following are unfunded proposals: the New Western High School in the vicinity of the Herndon Area Silverline Metro to alleviate capacity concerns at multiple high schools, and five new or and/or repurposed schools. The CIP also proposes additions at West Potomac High School, Justice, Madison, which are all partially funded, and proposes the relocation of three modular additions, two funded and one not. Funding for renovations at five named high schools are proposed in the CIP, additionally funds for the renovation of five named middle schools and one unnamed middle school are proposed. Lastly, funds for renovations at 30 named elementary schools and three unnamed elementary schools are included. Many of these renovation projects will include, of course, capacity enhancements. When we take a look at the membership, this slide that's before you, we talk about what's been going on and what we've been talking about for a number of years, and that is that we've been noticing a little bit of a contraction. The school year 2017 to 18 actual to the school year 2018 to 19 actual decreased by over 1,000 students. The breakout before you, elementary schools have decreased by 941 students, but membership in high school increased by 231 students and 45 students, respectively. We had a decrease at the centers and alternative programs by about 431 students, and our adult or homeschooled and our other categories increased by 85 students. The birth-to-kindergarten ratio has remained at 85%, but the total number of births and the birth rate has been on the decline. The transfer, the number of transferred students was approximately 20,000, which is about 11% of our system. The advanced academics program was 28% of those transfers, special education programs 21%, and the student transfer regulation about 18%. We talk about migration, net migration, the difference between students who withdrew in school year 2017 to 18 versus students who enrolled in 2018, 19. The net migration decreased from 1,253 students in the past school year to 357 students in school year 2018, 2019. There was a difference of plus or minus 5% for in-and-out migrants, in-migration for each race and ethnicity. We had high school with the Asian immigration of 17.5% and outmigration of 8.4%. And something that was rather statistically interesting for us was the high school Hispanic in-migration of 31.2%, but the outmigration of 47.5%. At the high school level, 814 students were classified as a dropout category. You can see the chart that reflects this on the net migration on the next chart on chart number four. One of the things that we have in our five-year projection is, as I mentioned, an overall contraction in our growth. Our housing growth is based upon the development already approved in the pipeline, rezoning, site plans, under construction, et cetera, and it will remain high, but primarily multifamily, which yields smaller amounts of students. The demographic shifts are pretty much a driver and really with the declining birth rates. Even though our ratio is still high at 85%, we're having a declining number of actual births. The elementary membership thus is projected to decline, and future growth expected at the middle and high school levels as large cohorts move up and through. We have capacity pressures expected more in the middle of the high schools. That's why I mentioned at the beginning about the additions and the capacity enhancements. And the membership growth is expected to occur in areas where schools may not have capacity surplus. And a lot of people are asking us, well, you know, what does this really mean? You know, here we have HQ2, we have Amazon coming. Have you guys accommodated that in your forecast? And we have. We have accommodations where the existing growth, there's a group called the Northern Virginia Demographers Network, and they met on December 14th, just a little while ago. And this was, they had a summary of the HQ discussion about what they thought the impact would actually be. The attendees included, you know, FCPS, Arlington County, Fairfax City, Alexandria City, Prince William County, Fairfax County, as well as General County. And a special guest, Jeanette Chapman, the Deputy Director and Senior Research Associate from the George Mason University Stevens Fuller Institute for Research, and about the Washington region's economic future. And out of all of that, the belief system is basically the data that they had done prior to Amazon coming here, and then the revised estimates are that they're going to be bringing about 25,000 jobs over a period of 12 to 16 years. They also say in the short term, the next three to five years, there will not be many Amazon jobs initially because it's going to take time for the buildings to be completed as part of their overall plan. We're going to stay on top of this because they say the first year Amazon begins with bringing around 400 jobs, according to the conversations that the George Mason University analysts had had with them. So what does this mean for us from a demographic standpoint or student yields? Really, it's to the consensus of the group that Amazon is really fulfilling part of the already forecasted employment growth through 2045 and that the housing growth accompanying that employment growth is currently accounted for. Now, that shift may happen. That's the initial prognosis, that's the initial projection, and as we know from our last briefings on where the growths are going to be across Fairfax County, when we talk about the 10,000 units out at the Innovation Center site, out in that realm of the county, and then if you take a look what's going on in other parts of the county, along the metro line and so forth, over in the Springfield area, there are a number of different opportunities for us to accommodate with the housing developments that are currently there. We will be keeping an eye on that. The point of this comment to you is that we do know shift is happening across this county. We do know that the planning that's been developed and the houses that have been developed have been shifting as well, the types. We do know that the marketplace is shifting. We will continue to be vigilant and be on top of any potential impact that it may have and report back to you about any of that. So in this program, the funding surface are the bond funding, and this board has been very active in obtaining additional revenues, additional resources for the school system. We had had a cap of about $155 million, and through the joint school board and board supervisor work, there was a release of approximately $13.2 million that was off of the burden of the bond funding that allowed us to advance our work. I know that was not a lot in terms of all of our efforts, what we felt we needed more, of course, the data showed that we did need more, but it was a start. And then after that, the additional $25 million, it's all moving in the right direction. Are we there yet? Absolutely not. But those additional funds allow us to really look at the $180 million a year now and then the operating funds that we have for and the infrastructure management funds that we have for our work. The funded projects, as I mentioned, Northwest County Elementary School, the unfunded projects are Fairfax Oakton Elementary School, the planning has been funded, but the construction is not. The Silverline has not been funded, the Future Western High School has not been funded, and the five new and/or repurposed schools that I mentioned have not been funded. Modular relocations are funded, unfunded projects, we also have modular relocation that's not funded. The West Potomac High School addition, the planning is funded for that addition, the construction is unfunded. Justin High School addition, the planning is funded and construction is unfunded. Madison High School addition, the planning is funded and the construction is unfunded. And so the total five-year requirement is $972,575,941. Of that, $329,903,271 is funded, and the remaining portion of $642,672,671 is unfunded. The total 10-year requirement is $2,174,502,975, with a funded portion, a small portion of that, the $351,72,619. The unfunded portion is the $1.8 billion. The capital project summary that we have, this is a listing of all of those under construction and planning at the elementary, middle, and high school level. I won't read through that, but it's provided for your perusal and your reference. So the capital project summary of renovations that have complete, Langley High School is absolutely beautiful, Stratford Lanning is beautiful, again, the design and the construction, the teamwork that goes on with our community and with our planners and with our general contractors, the partnerships that we have with the business community, it's just simply amazing. Cherry Run Elementary School is also finished, and Forestville and Langley, some really amazing projects. Langley, I had mentioned twice. We have an improved structure and content for our actual CIP. We've been, this has been a document that has been an evolutionary document. It has been more of a dynamic one. We do have static elements within the document that have to do with policy and so forth, but we do have the dynamic elements, which are the projections as well. One of the examples is the current and projected capacity utilization maps by region and by pyramid. Ms. Gillis and her staff really just are constantly thinking of ways of making the document more usable, more approachable, and more understandable. And when you deal with projections and demographics, it's really good that you have a forward-thinking team that can let you graphically take a look at how things are and how things are projected to be, so you can see the shift in the areas and the impact in each of those individual boundaries. In addition to that enhanced visual format, we have solutions summarized in a single table for each region. And in this, I know this was a big push by a number of the board members, if not all, was the new resource about the environmental and sustainability initiatives in Fairfax County Public Schools. Now, I will tell you that that environmental and sustainability summary that's in here will be gone into much greater depth and much greater detail. When I began to talk, and you'll see, you see on the actual agenda item, it does say that the, included in this is that sustainability report, but at the board's January 14, 2019 work session, the full renewable energy report is going to be presented and discussed in much greater detail. So where do we go? Well, we go out with new business on tonight. On Tuesday, January 8 is the, excuse me, is the public hearing. The work session, Monday, January 14, and then hopefully for action, for consideration by this body on Thursday, January 24. Madam Chair, that's all I have for my formal presentation for these two items. I'm certainly available to answer any questions at this time, but knowing that we're going to have all of the opportunities to really delve into it deeper, I know you've received a lot of information in a relatively short period of time. We'd like to be able to provide that to you sooner, but it simply is not possible. So if we, if you have any follow-on questions that you want to submit, we'd be happy to answer them either that way or any that we could answer tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg. It was a very good presentation. I do remind my colleagues of the next steps and schedule before us on the screen. However, if you would like to make any brief comments tonight, please feel free to do so. I know that Ms. Hines has some comments and questions, followed by Mr. Wilson and Ms. Palchek.
Okay, thank you very much. And much appreciated that we have included the environmental sustainability report in here and that it does summarize the renewable energy report, which the school board asked for. And as you say, Mr. Plattenberg- And as you say, Mr. Plattenburg, thank you, we will have a lot more detail on that. We'll have the report, the renewable energy report itself at our January fourteen work session. That's great. For the sake of those folks who may be coming out to the January eighth public hearing on this and won't have the benefit of our January fourteen work session for their thoughts, I thought I could just pick your brain on a few aspects of that, if you don't mind, while you're here. High-level questions at this point. So, the first thing I wanted to ask, just for everybody's sake, is, you know, some people wonder when we talk about renewable energy, isn't that about utility bills, right? So why, why do we talk about that in relation to the CIP? And I think it gets to this question that not only do we have to make sure that our buildings are as energy efficient as possible, but also there may be capital investments that we have to make in order to move as quickly as we'd like to move on renewable energy. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that is accurate. One of the things we talk about when we talk about our capital improvement program. Fairfax County has been a leader in the past and continues to be a leader in the area of sustainable initiatives. Mr. Sneed, in fact, has, was instrumental in the state's adaptation of, adoption, actually, in the preparation of the Consortium for High-Performing Schools, a very energy-efficient group that set the standard for the whole Commonwealth. So we have that kind of talent, not only here with us, but yeah, it talks about not only the carbon footprint. I mean, you think about TerraSet and TerraCenter, those were the first solar facilities in the Commonwealth, and that was done in the seventies. And the opportunities that are coming around to us, we have some of our neighboring jurisdictions that are really doing some wonderful things, but it's been at a cost. And so, yeah, for the people that want to come have a conversation with us, we've been looking at for the past three years, we've been looking at renewables, specifically solar. We've been working with a couple of different vending firms, in addition to some of our schools doing it, and we're supportive of that initiative and also our wind comatics that we are slowly taking off of the grid and putting them all on solar. Those individual elements are certainly, you know, they're great to have, but to have a more systemic approach is what we're looking at with, are now partnering with the General County. And I know that's been a focus of yours, how we've been doing it, Ms. Hines, about, you know, when are we going to get there? How are these people doing that? But, yeah, I could go on a little further about that if you wish.
Well, thank you, yeah. So you anticipated some of my other questions, so thank you. I just, I would just ask for just a little bit, a little bit of the history, and you touched on it a little bit about how staff, facility staff has worked with solar vendors in the past, talked to them and tried to find projects that might work and that you are working now hand and glove with county staff on the upcoming RFP, the Request for Proposals that the county's going to put out for power purchase agreements for solar energy and hoping to include schools as part of that RFP. Not necessarily specific schools, but the idea that there would be school projects in there. And so, if you give us a little bit of background about those conversations now with the county, do you know, like, where we are now? I understand that the RFP is supposed to hit the street in April twenty nineteen, is that correct?
Yes, correct. When you take a look at what's been going on, the folks that we've been working with, with our maintenance folks, our facilities maintenance folks, our acting director, Joe Lanham, and Justin Moss and Gary Graff have been doing a really good job. But what we did was we came in and brought some of these folks in because other people were doing it in other parts of the Commonwealth, and we were wondering how they did it. Well, when we delve deeper into details, some of them down in Augusta County and so forth, they had, they had grants that made it very conducive for them to do it. We looked at our friends in Arlington County. In fact, Mr. John Chandwick, a colleague of mine, and also Mr. Sneed's, and we found that they invested a lot more money into, in fact, almost three times what we were willing to do in our current limited bond program, for them to be able to accommodate the solar initiatives that they've done and some of the sustainability initiatives. So we'd been doing that, trying to find out what would work with meeting some of those vendors. Schools that we thought were really optimistic possibilities, they came back and told us, no, that that wouldn't meet the payback for them to invest in it. And then that doesn't even begin to talk about the level of detail that we have to about the roof structures, the weight bearing and so forth. We've gotten beyond many of the issues that people felt were out there about penetration in our roofs. And that was a big issue about maintenance and warranty and the life cycle of the roofs. So all of those details that we've been trying to have these conceptual frame of conversations because we are working with the county. And your point about that is absolutely correct. The county, the draft is supposed to be out, when the comments are back on the draft. We're hoping that they will give us a copy of the final back in January. And then they have a proposal conference that's scheduled in February. They plan on publishing the RFP, as you said. I think it's in January eighteenth that they're going to be actually putting it out. But then they have some time before it comes back and they're looking for awards sometime in the March-April timeframe. We are a part of that. They asked for us to identify individual schools. Our desire is to identify our school system. And that way, with the RFP going forward, we can work with, as we have found before, some that aren't aligned with our roof replacement cycle, looking at our structural level and the paybacks on this, and then coming back to the board with recommendations.
Thank you, that's good to know. That we're working closely with the county on that and that schools are going to be part of that project is great news. But so, just one final question, and it gets to, you know, you spent some time here tonight talking about our financial shortages, you know, when it comes to capital improvement. We know that we're pretty far behind, right? And, and when you look at, you mentioned, you know, Arlington and some other school systems that are moving faster than we are on renewables. And I think it's fair to say that the reason for that is that they have a dedicated, they have decided to dedicate or found some sort of dedicated funding stream for whatever capital investment needs to be made for those renewable projects, is that right? So, and I'm going to where, I know that we're going to be working collaboratively with the county on this, and thanks very much to our Chair, Karen Corbett Sanders, and the Chair of the Board Supervisor, Sharon Bulova, for setting up meetings of both boards. But I, I have a feeling that maybe one of the things we might want to put on our agenda is this question of, does the county and the community feel like, you know, if we have the need for extra capital investments to do this, is that something that you think would help?
Absolutely, Ms. Hines, you make an excellent point. I mean, the reality is, when you take a look at jurisdiction like our friends across the county line in Arlington, you know, the cost investment that they put into that program, the funding per square foot for the school compared to what we have. Now, we've been struggling with the problem for a number of years. I gave you all praise for addressing that problem and getting additional funding for it because it is noteworthy. But the reality is, when we talked about our average cycle of our buildings of thirty-seven years, and we talked about them going up to over fifty years before renovation, you look at the age of Oakton, Falls Church High School, when you look at where we are, and some of that is a product of revenues and revenue distribution, and that's where working with the county is. And some of it is a product of scale as well. So those things are working kind of against us, but we're making progress a little bit. But to your point, Ms. Hines, you're absolutely correct. I could go a long way further.
Thank you, I look forward to talking more about it in January.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that wonderful presentation. It's always amazing to me, the scope of the facilities operations that you have and it's a commendation to you and your staff to put this part of it together, the capital improvement. It's very extensive and one that is, I think, as you dig deeper into it, you realize the complexity level is even greater. In particular, I want to, again, extend my commendations for the ongoing work at Rocky Run Middle School and at Oakton High School. They're both very impressive projects and it's not just the facility staff, it's also the cooperation of the principals
Absolutely.
and the teachers and the students who are at those sites to make this, these, they're called renovations, but really they're, they're almost complete overhauls of the school in process while they're still getting their, you know, top-tier education. So, just another commendation on that point. I did have one question in the slides. On one of the pages, and I'm sure I don't know which one, but there was a phrase that said contracted growth. Does that mean that you're anticipating fewer students in the absolute number or growth, but smaller increases in the number of students?
I'm anticipating, first of all, thank you for those commendations. When you talk about phased occupied construction, we are recognized as a blue chip, best practice, best of class, and that's in no small part to the work that Mr. Sneed has been providing for a number of years. And I know he's coming towards the end of his, his journey with us, at least he suggests that. We don't want to let him go. Yeah, exactly. And, but it's in no small part from him and his team. And as you said, principals like Ms. Goodlove, Dr. Goodlove, who is here this evening. I mean, just amazing when you have people working together as a team, how effective, and the students. I mean, they're not shy of letting me know what we're doing wrong and we quickly respond. But it's, it's really a partnership between all of us working together. So contracted growth, contracted growth, really what we're looking at is, we're looking at continuing growing, but at a contracted rate. Now, we have a decrease of a thousand, but we're looking that we might see some, some additional bumps. When we mentioned the, and that's why I love the CIP being a one-year look at a five-year projection. So annually, we come back and if there's some outlier going on, if there's some development that all of a sudden people are just flooding to, we're able to, with Jessica and Ms. Gillis and her team, we're able to identify that and articulate it a little more. But we can go into much greater detail because there are certain grade levels, what you'll see in your CIP, that you'll see kind of bubbles go through, you know, and that's why we mentioned the middle and the high school. And then we'll also talk about the drop-off at the secondary, at the, actually, twelfth grade. Because it's a big difference.
Thanks, I just want, that is, I appreciate the clarification of what that term was meaning. Just to piggyback for just, just for a minute on Ms. Hines' comments. One thing that I think would be helpful for the board, and you can take this on tonight if you want or wait until the presentation. In these two, these two kind of ongoing major projects at Oakton and Rocky Run and other major projects, I wonder whether as part of your presentation, you could talk about, you know, how the plans accommodate issues that are current in terms of affecting our schools such as renewable resources and how we're, how we're implementing our own vision for renewables in our new projects. Also, the issue of school security, reassuring the public that, you know, the comments that we've received and the, and the best practices that we are reviewing are being incorporated in the design and construction aspects of these projects. There are, there are many, many other areas where I'm sure that you could update us on where the, the most recent projects are trying to bring the most, as you say, the blue chip, the most advanced and progressive approach towards school construction.
Absolutely, Mr. Wilson, I'll just touch on a few, but we're happy to follow up with you. If you take a look what we do in terms of safety and security, where we do our renovations, we always create a vestibule in the front area. In fact, if you look at that report that was mentioned earlier that came from the state, we were part and parcel of some of those conversations that went into that report of those best practices. In fact, this governing body, by approving the additional counselors and psychiatrists for Department of Student Services and also the additional staff for our training, that all is kind of was recognized in that report about the need for additional counselors and so forth. So from the security standpoint, those are some of the things that we have, exterior cameras that we have that are new and that are best practices that are put in place. But we'd be happy to go into more in terms of sustainability. We have biofilt, Terra, cool roofs, we have a number of things that we put into our schools, but we'll be happy to go ahead and delineate that further in the work session.
I think that everyone on the board would appreciate knowing a little more detail, particularly on issues that are of concern in our community. So thank you again for this presentation.
Ms. Palchek.
Yes, thank you, we're going in order tonight, and I appreciate your presentation and the work of you and your staff. And no, Mr. Sneed, your retirement is denied. But I do, as you know, have a few specific questions. We have a project and have held several community meetings, have heard from community members some of the concerns and because, you know, our, our work session will be after the, the public hearing, I shared with you in writing, I would love to share with you publicly some of the questions that have come across regarding the new Fairfax Oakton Elementary School and the proposed site for that. And so any of these that you're able to answer tonight would be helpful. And if not, I look forward to, you know, follow, follow-up answers so we, I can communicate these with, with my community. So a few of the questions I did send to you, so I'll just read them all and then feel free to answer. The first one is why, the question is why FCPS is planning to build a new school in the Fairfax Oakton area when we have seen a slight decrease in enrollment over the next five years' projections? So that is the first question. The second question is, why was this site chosen? And currently, I believe the site that's been chosen is owned by the county and it is currently an official, unofficial park with the Park Authority, the Blake Lane School Site, Blake Lane Park on Blake Lane Road. And what other sites or alternatives were considered? As you know, this has been used as a community park for over thirty years, so there is a lot of concern about this and the limited green space in the area. Another question was, when will a public meeting be scheduled to allow transparent process for the community to hear these plans and ask questions? I know that is being worked out. It involves us, the county, the Park Authority, and considerations with transportation and as well as our city of Fairfax boundaries. And, and it should include those players, as well as safety and security, as you mentioned, has been a question that's been brought up. So I think it'd be helpful to be able to share that with the community. When will an online portal be made available with additional information for members of the public to ask questions and express concerns? An additional question came in of, does this CIP, the new one, include, so in the projections, does it include the new Fairfax Oakton Elementary School, even though those boundaries are not decided yet? So I think a clarifying question of, as when people look through these CIP projections, does that take into account the new school? And then finally, there are concerns about, you know, environmental impact, traffic impact, and the limited green space. I know it's a lot of questions, I'm happy to repeat any of them. I have emailed them, I have emailed them, I have two additional ones I will email, but I haven't emailed the others. So I don't know if there are any tonight that you're able to answer, especially about, you know, the broader questions.
Absolutely, and they're excellent questions, Ms. Palchek. When you, when you look at the planning to build in Fairfax Oakton, when we plan to build any school, we look at the capacity in that region and the ability for the pyramid to support it. And when we look at this, we simply put, even though the ones you mentioned that are decreased and the concern of the community, when you have a decrease of six and four students at one school or another, that is part of the whole puzzle, but they're still overcrowded. And their percent overcrowded is still greater than what we'd want. But in addition to this, in this area, we have a number of students in that pyramid that really are attending other schools. So their needs are being met in other areas. And what do I mean? We've got over two hundred students from Waples Mill who receive AAP services in the South Lakes Pyramid. And we also have two hundred and thirty-five Fairfax County residing students who currently attend Providence Elementary School that the city of Fairfax had mentioned, and it's no surprise that they would like to have them return back into Fairfax County Public Schools facility due to their city ordinance. So, simply put, overcrowding condition. But in this overcrowding condition, we have to look at not just what's in the CIP, and perhaps some narration would make it more informative for the public when they look at that, but certainly our community meetings would be able to articulate that a little bit further. Why was this site chosen for a new school and what other sites or alternatives were considered? We had two sites. We had one site that is landlocked, that doesn't have a road to it and would require some zoning modifications, et cetera. And this site had been owned by Fairfax County Public Schools up until two thousand and five, when it was transferred back to the county. And when this land was identified as a school back up until whenever we owned it, till that two thousand and five, the Board of Supervisor member for that Magisterial District chose to hold on to the property for a dedicated school site, even though its interim use was whatever, by the community.
Sorry, in addition to that, so other alternatives, as people have asked, can we add on to other schools as opposed to creating a new school as well?
Yeah, that runs into a lot of, it's not without being fraught with a lot of issues in terms of if you run into FAR, and I don't know exactly each of these schools in that area. The answer, short answer is yes. There are many ways to address the situation. But we look at it from the most cost-effective, cost-efficient way to do it because of the limited bond dollars that I mentioned before and the most appropriate way to meet the needs within the whole Oakton Pyramid. So, but again, it may run into a lot of zoning issues. And getting back to the site, it's been, remained in institutional use designation by the Department of Zoning for some time. So, and then you asked, when would a public meeting be scheduled? I believe it's scheduled for January sixteenth at Mosby Woods Elementary School starting at seven P.M. The Park Authority will be attending as well as the requested safety folks from, from my team. And then the next few questions really quickly. The website is anticipating the operational in the first week of January. And then you asked, does this CIP include the new student enrollment? No, we don't include that until we actually get approval and we get those seats started under construction. So they're not, they're not accommodating- So they're not, they're not, accommodating them currently isn't in there. And then the last one you asked about environmental green space. I don't really know what they mean by that, but we'll go ahead and follow up with that as to the impact. Of course, anything we build right now, again, with our consortium for high-performing schools, all the biofiltrator, filtera, and then filtration units that we provide, the stormwater management, basically, that we accommodate with natural elements, it's all associated with environmental and green space. So we work with folks to make sure we're good stewards of the public trust, and we've got an excellent track record for that. Excellent questions, Ms. Palchek, and we'll be happy to follow up with them.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg. Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. First of all, I really appreciate the way the CIP is constructed and put together, the maps and the projections, yes, Ms. Gillis and Mr. Sneed and all the rest of you. It is so helpful. Not only gives the school board an idea of where we are likely going in terms of student enrollment, but it helps the community to understand what is going to be needed now and in the future. And so I think it's just, we're all much better educated as to where we're going to need schools, seats, renovations, what have you. So the detailed projections, the data that's provided and the maps are excellent. And as I know you all are aware, the McLean Pyramid is very eager to begin the boundary process to move portions of the Longfellow-McLean Boundary into the Cooper-Langley, costs nothing. And we are now done with the beautiful renovation and expansion at Langley High School, so we are ready to begin to talk about, and I really think begin to scope, the boundary changes. And the, we will be having a community meeting on January 17th. I think Ms. Gillis has been invited to come, and anybody else that wants to come. We began talking about this last spring, and I, my humble belief is that we can begin to do the shifting, and I think those boundaries will hold for 10, 15, maybe more years than that. So given the development at Tyson's, and right now, much of the growth is coming from existing housing stock particularly, very popular apartments, they're very affordable, very family-friendly and large enough for families, and they've always produced a lot of kids, and they're producing more now. So it is an opportunity to begin the discussions, begin the shifting, and the community knows it's coming and they can see exactly why. So I look forward to starting that conversation. And of course, the other small piece is at the elementary level. Hopefully, at some point, we can add on to Little Franklin Sherman. It's our last, last piece of ground that we can actually add classroom space without having to ask for any kind of a zoning change of forgiveness. But front and center is, I think we need to begin the boundary process. So no more trailers. We can solve this one. We've built the classrooms and they're ready to receive children. So again, thank you very much on a fine, fine document that you've produced for all of us.
Well, thank you, Ms. Strauss. And on page 46 of your CIP, when you get a chance, that's the page that talks about our work going forward. We'll certainly take your advisement about that and the work you've done to bring the community together, to look at this and look at the opportunities. And again, the knockdown and the rebuilds that have gone on, as in much of the Magisterial Districts across this county, and families just moving back into areas where, you know, younger families are moving in with kids. So yeah, thank you very much for those points. Excellent.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation and looking forward to an in-depth conversation on January 14th. I was looking at page 128. Obviously, we didn't get the CIP until, and I picked it up yesterday.
Yes, sir.
But I haven't had really much time to go through every single page. But I was looking at 128, which shows a capacity balance summary. And overall, for the elementary school, we have excess capacity, just looking at the countywide numbers. And even high school is a zero balance. In the middle school, we have, you know, smaller but still excess capacity. But I'm going to go back to my favorite topic, which is trailers. And Mr. Kevin Sneed is not going to retire until all the trailers are gone with first. I think he's agreeing with me. I think, yeah, right, right. He's committed to stay here until that is done first. So are we going to have on January 14th any discussion about trailers?
I believe, Mr. Moon, as you have strongly been passionate about shepherding this cause, yes, I definitely know we will. I know you've asked questions in the past. How can we accelerate our programs? And I look forward to that deeper discussion on that day.
And I was trying to find earlier this evening, trailer information in CIP. And again, I haven't had a chance to go through every page.
Yes, sir.
Is there trailer information?
There is. The trailer report is in here. I'll go ahead and reference that for you.
I have not been able to locate that.
Yes, sir.
So if you could just let me know, you know, send me an email or board members where you can find trailer information. I would like to know, you know, which school has how many trailers? I want to be able to compare those numbers with a capacity utilization of the schools. When I look at, you know, many of the pages for the elementary school, for example, being underutilized, at least looking at the numbers, and with, if the buildings are underutilized, we shouldn't expect to see any trailers being used for instructional purposes. I mean, there would be a common sense.
Well, I totally agree with you. Yeah, we've been, we've been doing nothing but working with that vision in mind set by the board. Dr. Braybrand has made it quite clear.
When you, when I get the trailer information by schools, should I expect to see that none of the schools being underutilized, having trailers for instructional purposes?
That's what we're working towards, but you will not see that. You will be disappointed. You will press upon me to go ahead and eradicate that issue, and we are working closer than ever with our principals to resolve that.
Before, before, I ask my colleagues to, you know, direct the superintendent to eradicate those problems. I want to see if there are trailers, why there are trailers, why the building itself is being underutilized. That's, so that's one of the questions that, you know, I want to.
Yes, sir.
I'll bring it to you and also want to have a discussion about.
Yeah, and just broad summary for the other members of the governing body that are aware of this as well. You know, our practices as local-level management of schools and our isolated views of yesterday are pretty much being moved beyond. Working together with the principals, with the school staff, with our capacity analysts, we have two capacity analysts that work, capacity architects that work in the planning department under Ms. Gillis, who work with our principals to identify more efficient use of the space. But given that, the history and the growth of some of these programs and some of the initiatives or space that's been provided in the past, it's challenging to get people to see that same vision of the governing body. But with your pressure, I think we can get this all done together.
Mr. Plattenberg, just, I want to state just one more time, looking at the capacity balance from page 128, overall, we don't have capacity problems. It's how we use the existing capacity, and we shouldn't be having 20,000 students being taught in trailers every day. That's way too many students.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Schultz.
If we could go to, please, on the slides, the second slide on the presentation, please. So when you say, "FCPS decreased by 1,011 students," what does that mean?
That means we decreased by 1,011 from actual to actual, 2017 to 2018, 2018, 2019, for the same timeframe, which is different, as you heard from Ms. Burden when she was presenting the budget, because they do it based upon their projection and that difference number, and she kind of articulated it.
No, I'm just trying to figure out which numbers you're using because, okay, so this, this is why, and in the meantime, if we could go to the actual CIP, the backup document to page 39. So I have been relentlessly persistent and consistent for, I think, nine years, seven years on the board and two years prior. This is where my, can we, we're bringing that up? So this is my concern, because we passed the 2019 CIP in May of this year, correct?
Presume so, yeah.
Okay. So our 2017-18 membership was at an actual of 189,029. With the projected membership for this year and the document just passed last spring of 190,533. So when we passed a document, we anticipated this fall that we would have 190,533. What we really have is 188,000,018, which is a difference of 2,515. So I'm trying to get to, and this is, you know, as happy as I am with the changes that we keep eking along with the CIP. Dr. Braybrand, in our classrooms, students have to show their work. You have to show how you got to where you're going. And if we on this, I'm looking for the CIP, page 39. If, on a five-year rolling projection forward, if we don't ever show what happened in relation to those projections, because what would be really interesting right now for me is to know what did we project for this fall three years ago, four years ago, five years ago? Has, is our trend analysis, the gap analysis of what we think is going to happen and what actually happens, does it get better over time as a division? Because we tout, and if we could make that a lot bigger so that the top, it's just the top chart, there you go. So on the rolling forward basis, if we pass a CIP this spring, it includes the successive year. And the thing that we pat ourselves on the back about is, is that at a division level in the spring, we anticipate that, you know, 120 days later, we've hit the mark on the number of students. That isn't what matters, because being able to react on 120 days or being able to predict on 120 days doesn't make us, one, the first isn't possible, and the second isn't laudable. The question is, is that as we project and the things that my colleagues have brought up, why are we building a school here? Why are we taking away a park? You know, what are we doing about advanced academics? Why am I making one of my schools, where we're spending tens of millions of dollars to make one of my schools bigger when we bust 60% of the population from outside of its boundaries? These are the questions that require that long-term strategic approach, but we can't do it if we're not going back and checking how is it that we're doing? And not just at a division level, but, you know, at that more granular level, you know, at a region level, at a pyramid level, and frankly, at a school level. Because I have schools that have had a 19% increase in three years. So we say, oh, well, we've retracted, and overall as a division, that doesn't matter to the school that's had 19% growth. And it is struggling, you know, where to put students. So it's the question of the right space and the right place. So I would ask that we work through at this coming, you know, I'll get into more at our work session, but the plan is to have a planned approach to analyzing what happens over time to the projections. There should be five- and 10-year trends, not just on a going forward, but what has in fact happened. If you look at another, I didn't write this one down, oh, yes, I did. The birth rate, this is on 35, it's four slides before. So the birth rate of what's looking like our kindergartners, you can see over time there are, there are big dips. I don't know why. I'm sure that there's, you know, I don't know if there was a recession or something, you know, nine months prior. But this, this is, this begins to tell the story, but it doesn't, it doesn't add up to things like aging neighborhoods. And if you have a neighborhood that is owned, you know, a lot of original owners, and they're in their, you know, 60s, 70s, 80s, guess what? We can anticipate in a very short order of time, we're going to have a lot of elementary students, because young families are going to come in and buy those homes, and, you know, now we're going to have a pressure. And so just doing a boundary change doesn't solve the problem. It's getting into an anticipatory mode, and we can't anticipate unless we're drilling down more on this. And for my colleagues, and I'm going to do a CPDC update a little bit later in our agenda, but, you know, Ms. Palchek's away from the table, you know, she asked a lot of questions tonight. And really, the, that's a precursor to, I think, where we need to go to be, to have intentionality as a board with us, with the Board of Supervisors, with us, with staff, with us, with potential external experts, because we ask a lot of budget questions. I see budget questions, they come in all the time. We get budget questions even from the Board of Supervisors. We have a big, thick document by the time we pass a budget of all the budget questions that we've asked. We don't ask CIP questions. This is, this is, you know, what, five and a half pentagons, 27 and a half million square feet, a million and a half square feet of trailer space. We're not asking the questions over the course of, this just gets developed by staff and it gets presented to us, and then we pass it in the spring, and we have FPAC, and they do their work over the course of this year, and then they present a report in May, and then we, then we do it all over again. And I think treating the CIP and the needs that are coming and how they're changing and where they're changing, and HQ2, and what's Apple doing, and what's happening in Tyson's, and what are we doing with, you know, on our resource stewardship of underutilized or unutilized buildings, and how that looks through the lens of equity for students in different areas of the county. If you put up the Springfield District, two-thirds of the Springfield District is black, has no school in it whatsoever. And it's shocking. It's shocking when you see those big, black areas and what that means in equity. So I'm happy about this. I know we haven't really as a board, because of everything we've had going on, we haven't had a chance to dig into this. But there's some great work that's been developed in this, but my perennial asks, I'm becoming impatient with them, because I think it's where we get better. I think it's where we have a little bit more transparency with the public on what we projected versus what actually happened, and I think it presents a great opportunity for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. McLaughlin.
Well, Mr. Plattenberg, as you can see, it's very tempting for all of us to bring our passions and our sort of district-level priorities. And given the late hour, I will refrain from wanting to dive in as deeply as I know we all want to do. But Dr. Braybrand, I especially want to use this opportunity with not just my colleagues, not just those who might be watching, but especially for you, as you get ready to bring us your budget in January. I am deeply concerned that Mr. Plattenberg's shop, with his amazing staff that are joining us here tonight, are grossly, grossly understaffed. And what that has meant for us is that we have a boundary change backlog that has been plaguing my district for at least four to five years. I'm so happy for Ms. Strauss, that's something she brought up last year, and now she's already getting worked on. But Mr. Plattenberg, you know me well, that's disappointing for me and the Braddock District, because you and I have talked about some of the boundary challenges we have. And so I, I don't know what it's going to take, Dr. Braybrand, but since you've joined us and during the three years that Dr. Garza was with us, as a full board, I'm not aware of when we've really been doing any, any boundary changes and boundary votes. The first year I was on the board, we did a big change for Woodson and, you know, ended up moving kids out of Fairfax Station that were going to Woodson, and went over to Robinson, and moved Villa over into Woodson. But since that time, it's like everything ground to a halt, at least from what I've experienced. So my, my humble request is that, Mr. Plattenberg, you're hearing from So my humble request is that, Mr. Plattenberg, you're hearing from one board member, I am so supportive of whatever voice you need to bring to Dr. Braybrand, the leadership team, and this board, to help us address this boundary backlog. Mr. Moon was kind of touching upon it as well. We have excess capacity, it's just between where we've put special programs and where we're busing in kids, that's, you know, creating overcrowding in some schools and use of trailers, and then vacancies in existing elementary schools, you know, where we just, we've moved the kids out. We have situations where neighborhood schools are no longer neighborhood schools. They're visitor schools, and the neighborhood kids feel like they're the outsiders looking in, depending on the programs that are there. So I just would love to see us have some more intentionality. We just, this is too large of a division to not start addressing the boundary backlog. So that's kind of my number-one point. You know, I also know that in my district, we have some attendance boundaries for our AAP centers that are causing kids to be bused really far to, again, overcrowded centers. And this is why, again, I'm so bringing a voice of support to you, because you know it, you know the challenges, but I feel like you're not getting the support. The third thing is, is that enrollment projections for new residential developments. We've been talking about a little bit, some of those who are following the issue on the Schools Committee for the Planning Commission. But I'm gonna use this bully pulpit to again say, everybody, if you're not aware, we've got a problem that the county dictates a standard calculation, you know, formula for new residential housing, here's your formula. And it's standard across the county, regardless of where it's actually happening within the county. And I bring it up because I got one of those memos that said something that's gonna be built in Braddock, and it will yield this many students. So the developer only has to think about the impact of whatever that formula said. But yet, to Jeff's talented staff, when they actually ran that formula based on an existing development that's there, because they're adding on to the exact same spot, it was like double the number of students. So our staff actually have a really great internal formula for projecting enrollment, but what the county gives us, and apparently it's part of our MOU from long, long ago, is causing our school division to project fewer students than what will actually be yielded in a residential setting. And that's leaving Fairfax County residents with, again, footing the bill and potentially overcrowded schools in our neighborhoods. And then my fourth thing that I wanted to emphasize is what Ms. Schultz said, trend analysis to improve our enrollment projections. I want to applaud you again, Mr. Plattenberg, you've got a great team, and you guys are doing great work. But I think that, again, with additional staff that I think you need and deserve, some of this deeper trend analysis, Dr. Braybrand, that is Ms. Schultz pointed out, we don't have to be reactive, we can be proactive in really understanding how close are we to what our formula was telling us we would get, and then you get that look back. You get to Monday morning quarterback and say, how did we do? So those are just kind of the four areas. To my colleagues, I am saving you from hearing all the other things in Braddock District that have been backlogged and problematic, but that will be for our work session. And so Madam Chair, I will say, I believe I looked at the schedule for January's work session, this is for two hours. So to those of you who haven't spoken yet, or if not, you might want to email our lovely Madam Chair, but I think we're gonna need three hours. We do this once a year, and two hours for a CIP discussion is not gonna cover nine magisterial districts.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. On that point, I would-
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I just address one thing?
Sure.
I apologize. Excellent points, as always, by every member. And Ms. McLaughlin, on page forty-six, I want your constituents to know, you have been doing a lot of work, as you mentioned, but there has been progress made. They have moved up from the lower portion of that page forty-six to the upper. And I think, I think you had mentioned something where, with Ms. Strauss, that isn't even reflected on here. I think Ms. Strauss is asking that it be reflected, but you've been doing a lot of work in that, and I just wanted that recognition to be out there. And I just want to make that statement, just in case, maybe my misinterpretation of it, but yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg. And I will remind all of my colleagues at the magisterial level that they should take the time to do a one-on-one with you and your staff regarding the capital improvement projects in their area and how that is addressed, and that, once you've had those meetings or discussions, that should inform the work of the work session. And I do just encourage that people take the time to dig into this document in advance of the work session. However, I do have Mr. McElveen, who has waited patiently, so it's your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Plattenberg, for your wonderful presentation. The first question I have for you has to do with our bond funding levels. You gave us the aggregates. I do want to get the year-by-year, though. So we will now be up to a hundred and eighty million, correct, with the additional twenty-five?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay. Are we still at the amount of two seventy-one million?
Yes, sir, you're onto the, very good point there, sir.
Okay, got it. So for my colleagues, we're still at the two hundred and seventy-one million level in order to fund, which would be the full funding level for all of our replacement, or renovations plus accommodating the trailer over capacity. So another question that Mr. Moon was getting at, I know we have made progress on our trailers, and I would ask, is, is Mr. Sneed still the largest trailer dealer on the East Coast? Do we know?
I would believe so, and he's yelling yes in the background, so I mean, yes.
Okay, that's unfortunate.
It is.
That's one of those statistics that we don't like to be at the top of the list on, so. And then finally, just to probe a little more on what Ms. Hines was getting at with the solar efforts. In your remarks, you said that we are looking at it as more of a whole-of-county outlook as opposed to individual school by school. I know at a prior presentation, you had said we would, we were looking specifically at outfitting three schools with solar. And so I would ask you, are we still looking at those three schools? And if so, can you tell us how that feasibility study is coming?
Yeah, so when we looked at that, it was really taking a look at where the optimal sites would be, and some of those, you know, there's a misnomer, some people, members of the community, and I've heard this before, one of those schools had a pitched roof, and people were saying, well, you can't build any more schools with pitched roof, because if you're gonna look long-term into the future for renewables, you can't put things like solar panels up on pitched roof, when in fact, you really can. So the reality versus the myth and the talk about those things is what we are trying to navigate through on the schools that we were looking at. So we came up with three schools that had already some aggressive elements to it that we incorporated in the design. Mason Crest was one of the ones we looked at, and some other schools. But we didn't get to the point where, I had mentioned before, the next level of detail. So when I say that we want to take a system-wide approach with the county, it doesn't mean that we don't then look at the individual schools, to your point. And I think that's the basis of your question. By looking at all those individual schools, we'd be able to see where they align with their roof replacement, where it would be opportunistic to go ahead and do the installation, had we just finished a renovation or renewal. Is the roof load able enough to accommodate the capacity that the calculations say are really advantageous for us to take advantage? So that we can bring that information back to have, you know, as we've talked about, a more informed conversation about how we, as a school division, and you as a governing body, want us to move forward.
So can you tell us, did the, when you looked at Mason Crest, when you looked at Chantilly and the other school, how did those feasibility studies come back?
Well, they looked great on initial first bluff, but again, unless I do the engineering analysis on the support for that, that's a different conversation. They looked very positive. The future, I think, well, not to be pun, but the future's bright for solar, and these power purchasing agreements. Now, keep in mind, they're almost like utility in oversimplification, it's more of a purchase of electricity as a service, really, from one of those providers. But there's some, there's some good things that are going on. A neighboring jurisdiction has a beyond twenty-five-year commitment. I don't know that this body would want to engage in something that long. A shorter term may have less of a, might be a higher utility cost, it still may be less than what we have. All of those data metrics is what we want to go ahead and have the capacity through this power purchase agreement that we're working with the county into next spring, to have that information, to have that vendor that we can work with, so we can really do the data analysis, the nuts and bolts that we think will move us forward.
And finally, do you have a sense, once the PPA comes back and we move through that process, how long does the outfitting timeline take?
I'm gonna have to get back to you, Mr. Ryan, that's an excellent question. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Got it, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg, thank you for your excellent presentation and for an ever-improving CIP, very much appreciated. I know we're gonna go in-depth, and I am gonna have my conversation with you and Mr. Sneed about Mason District, but I just wanted to raise a couple of questions and points. The first one is about the role of modulators. And as you have said in the report very clearly, modulators count in capacity, trailers do not. One of the things that I have wanted to see in the past, at least at some of my schools, is how much capacity those modulators add. I know we have the number in there, and unless I'm-
Right, we do.
-reading over it, do we have the amount of capacity someplace in there that each modular adds to a school?
I believe we do, and I know we didn't pass CIPs, but I'll have to go ahead and follow up with you, and give you an answer back on that.
Okay. And I guess, the reason I raise this issue is, I see you're looking at Mr. Sneed, I don't-
Only because he has his hands in the air. Whenever he does that, I get excited.
All right. But, well, we can, we can have, but I just wanted to let you know that I do want to be, to see some of that, because I do think that sometimes it gives a, an impression about capacity to a school that may not really comport with reality. Right now, at Glen Forest Elementary, for example, we've been having conversations with that community. They have eleven hundred children at that school now. It's a very large elementary school. Is that the largest in Fairfax County now?
I'm not sure, I don't believe so, but it's a large elementary school.
I remember when Bailey's was pushing fourteen hundred, and we split it in two, at that school, even though they have room there, and we have modulators there, the core space is still the core space it was with the gymnasium, with the cafeteria. So I think it's important for us to know what the, what the core capacity is, what the core program capacity at a school like that is. We've had the community come to us and ask for a boundary change, because they feel, as a community, that it is overcrowded, even though I believe here, we're not showing it as overcrowded. So that's just one example. The other is Glasgow. I believe Glasgow, well, Glasgow has eighteen hundred students as a middle school. So, and I believe that's, that may be the largest in the state, not only in our county. So the only reason that's showing at a hundred percent capacity rather than, than very much overcapacity is because we just added a modular there, correct?
Well, some of it comes down to, in the case of Glen Forest, where capacity architects have identified more efficient use of space, that hasn't been adopted yet. So there are a number of variables, but we have a work session coming up, we can cover all of this.
Right, so that's why I wanted to alert you that I do want to, want to see-
Absolutely.
You know, the core space versus the space including-
Yeah, and modulators, of course, are capitalized, you know, they're funded through the bond, and they are, we do have different types of modulators that are out there, some that are connected to schools, that seems like a continuation of a hallway, and then others that you've mentioned. But we can have that conversation definitely in the work session.
Right, but it is different having a modular, it just is. The kids have to go outside, that modular, as Mr. Sneed knows, is very, very old, and the cafeteria doesn't get any larger when we, when we add a modular. It just doesn't, and neither does the gym. So I think that that, it's something that we need to divide out. I see Falls Church is slated to be at a hundred and twenty-one percent capacity. Any chance that that capacity crisis is going to speed up the renovation, the much-needed renovation there?
It'd be nice if we get more funding, that would really help and assist in that endeavor. But, yeah, I mean, you know, we're doing everything we can, we do know the urgency, you've been working really hard in getting Falls Church recognized. In fact, you got the design with the support of your colleagues, you got the design advance for us to get started on that earlier, and we're seeing anything we possibly can do. But I see it currently in the next, in the next bond referendum for the actual construction, though.
We can have the, we will have more of a conversation there about that, but, you know, sometimes we say-
About the possibilities.
...capacity trumps renovation, and so if you've got both capacity and, I'm just hoping that that will help it. And then lastly, you mentioned Mason Crest, and it made me realize, because we are talking about energy, that was our first and possibly only one using geothermal, so when we come to the work session, I would kind of, I would be interested to know, did that work out? You know, that was an innovative approach, and is that something that we are thinking of expanding? I don't know if you have the answer tonight, that's fine, if you don't, we can have a conversation at the work session.
I think we can, and certainly when we discuss the renewables, Mason Crest is a project we can talk about. When you look at geothermal, it does have an investment, getting back to the point, and Mr. Sneed's made this point, about when we talk about the investment that Arlington has put into their capital program, that does have a higher first cost, the sticker cost on that-
Right.
...is pretty high in the payback. We still are having some maintenance, ongoing maintenance, so we have some experiential data as to how it's been performing. But in terms of energy use index, right, when we do that comparison, one of the reasons why we looked at that school for possibility is to see the overall consumption and the comparators with neighboring school districts on that. And I know Ms. Hines had asked about that as well, to look at the EUIs for that. But we definitely can have that conversation, not only in the work session for the CIP, but I think more so in the work session on renewables, that component in the work session on renewables.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Plattenberg, I will hold off any questions until the work session that I have.
Thank you.
And Dr. Braybrand, you have your light on?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you, Mr. Plattenberg, you and your team are outstanding, as this board has said, we're very lucky. And I really appreciate the board comments. This CIP is not what it was even five years ago. This is, this document has grown, it is better. We do believe in continuous improvement, and I do think figuring out how we can start to do some of that looking-back analysis to help inform how we look forward is important. And I do realize and do want to start to move from what we've been doing in terms of having to take budget cuts and cut back on positions, to deal with the expectations that the board and this community has, and figuring out how we then refine what we need for the years ahead in some areas where we want to take it to the next level. Because we are losing, we are losing experience and talent, and how are we gonna replace it? One other thing, I just want to be as candid as I can, as a person who came here for many years, as an intern, twenty-five years, I do think this board does need to spend more time talking about CIP and less about budget. Our CFO wants to discuss less budget, so she can have more time to do the budget in the way that I think this board expects it to be. We have on the work session in February to talk about the goals. We're ready to do more work in boundaries. We have to decide, is the board gonna give an overarching prioritization of the factors that make up a boundary decision? We have a list of, a medley of factors, and there's talk, and I appreciate it, about how we show our work. How do we show the community how we're deciding boundaries? There are many factors. But do we want certain factors, for example, capacity or reducing trailers to drive our decisions? Are all factors equal? We'll be able to do our work, I think, better to meet your needs as we think about what the true priorities are. I know boundaries are hard, they're very hard. That's why often they're not done, and I think we need to work together as a new team, because I am new, you've had four superintendents in five years. And now, we do need to make some hard decisions around CIP and the boundaries, we do. And I want to work with you, but we need to work together and be clear at the outset about the direction of the work and how you want to prioritize it, and we will get it done and bring it to you. And we need to work with our community, and we need to have them as part and parcel of all that we do. And we want everybody to feel good about every Fairfax County school that their children are in. And if we do that well, if we have the Fairfax promise of excellence, equity, and effectiveness in every school, I think we can get there. But I look forward to the journey, and we are ready to do it, and I think the February work session, beyond just the CIP discussion- But I look forward to the journey and we are ready to do it. And I think the February work session, beyond just the CIP discussion we're gonna have in January's work session, directing us with the appropriate goals for the boundary process will make us be able to speed up. And I promise you full transparency as we make boundary decisions so that boundary decisions are made with the full understanding of what is going on for the board. Because I think that's important for this board and the community and for the relationship I want to have with you on this very important topic. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, and I appreciate you linking boundary discussions to the CIP. I'm gonna come full circle back to Mrs. Hines' comments earlier in the evening regarding the CIP and the need to make linkages and more closely collaborate, not only amongst ourselves, with your staff, but with the county. And that's why we have a very busy spring coming up between the discussion of the CIP with the public hearing on January 8th, the work session on the 14th, followed by some, a vote on the CIP on the 24th, as well as joint discussions between the two boards, the Board of Supervisors and the School Board in the March timeframe, and around the same time period having a discussion about goals of our boundary process. And so we are not going to see this CIP go on a shelf on January 24th, but rather that it is a living, breathing document. And your excellent work and the excellent work of your staff is greatly appreciated to make it come to life for all of us. And I think that you will see us putting as much emphasis on this as we do our budget.
Thank you.
So with that, I am going to call on Mr. Tigner for a recognition of some special guests in the audience.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and apologies for missing that out earlier, but I know a few of them are left, but there was Lucas Bowles from Troop 1853, and Eli Bowles from Troop 1853, and Colin Gwen from Troop 1140, and Ethan Bell from Troop 1107. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you. Now we will have a confirmation of an action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding the issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each, the one case. And we will make a single motion for this one and then come back later with additional ones. So I call on Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that a recommendation to revoke the Virginia teaching license of the teacher identified. Enclosed meeting be forwarded to the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Second. All those in favor? And that motion, not quite, okay, so we have Ms. Hines, Ms. Palchuk, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Darrenack Kofax, Mr. Moon, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Evans, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Schultz? Ms. Schultz. Those opposed? Those abstaining? I have Mr. Wilson and Ms. Keys-Gimara. That motion passes. I now call on Ms. Darrenack Kofax for a motion on the mid-year budget review.
I move that the School Board adopt, excuse me, I move that the School Board approve revenue and expenditure changes reflected in the FY 2019 mid-year budget review as detailed in the agenda item.
Second motion? Ms. Darrenack Kofax, would you like to speak to your second?
Just very briefly, we had a presentation and we also had extensive conversation at a work session. And I believe most people had their questions answered, and I look forward to passing this motion.
Ms. Strauss, would you like to speak to your second?
I just want to thank my colleagues for the discussions that we have had, and I want to thank staff for their excellent presentations and patience in answering questions that we have come to the table with. And with that, I encourage everybody to approve this. Thank you.
The motion before us is that the School Board approve revenue and expenditure changes reflected in the fiscal year 2019 mid-year budget review as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor? So that is Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, Ms. Keys-Gimara, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Ms. Darrenack Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchuk, Ms. Hines. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Ms. Schultz and Mr. Wilson. That motion passes. Just want to speak to the audience that the board needs to return to closed session to finish up a conversation about another item on the agenda before we can discuss it publicly. And so I'm going to make a motion to, the board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding litigation in specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711a7 and A8 of the Code of Virginia, specifically legal compliance and personnel matters and contracts. And three, protect the privacy of individuals in personnel matters not related to public person, public business pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711a4. And four, discuss and consider disciplinary and other matters concerning one or more students pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711a2 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Mr. McElveen. All those in favor? And that motion passes unanimously. We are now enclosed.
Seconded by Ms. Hines, all those in favor. And that motion is unanimous. I was planning on it. We're going to return to our confirmation of actions taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the Board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommendations.[1013.36][1013.36](APPLAUSE). I call on Mr. Moon for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to excuse from attendance at school certain students identified in closed meeting pursuant Virginia Code Section 22.1254B1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor. And that motion has Ms. Strauss, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Evans, Ms. -- Mr. Moon, Ms. Darrenack Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchek, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Hines. Those against? Those abstaining? I have Ms. Keys-Gamarra and Ms. McLaughlin. That motion passes. I now call on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed and used illegal drugs at school during the school day and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Seconded by Ms. Hines, all those in favor. Ms. Strauss, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Evans, Mr. Moon, Ms. Darrenack Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchek, Ms. Hines. Those against? Ms. McLaughlin. Those abstaining? Mr. Wilson. That motion passes. Oh, Ms. Keys-Gamarra is abstaining as well. That motion passes. I now call on Ms. Schultz for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who threatened another student at school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Seconded by Ms. Palchek, all those in favor. That motion is unanimous. I now call on Ms. Darrenack Kofax.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who assaulted and bullied other students at school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor. That motion is unanimous, passes. I now call on Ms. McLaughlin for a motion.
Yep, I'm six.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who assaulted students and staff at school and also disrupted the educational environment and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor. That motion is unanimous, passes. I now call on Ms. Schultz for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who assaulted another student at school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second the motion.
All those in favor. That motion's unanimous. I now call on Ms. Palchek for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who improperly touched another student at school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor. That motion's unanimous. I now call on Ms. Evans for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the School Board approve proposed revisions to Policy 8335 wireless telecommunication facilities as detailed in the agenda item.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, thank you very much. The Governance Committee and the School Board have been working on this issue for two years. We have -- the Governance Committee has spent many, many sessions working on it and we have brought it to several work sessions of the full Board. So I'm pleased that we are going to come to a conclusion on the changes of this policy tonight. We are tonight making revisions that provides for more oversight of cell tower placement, making sure that the School Board has oversight, more oversight, and that there's earlier and better community notification as well as community involvement when a cell tower is being considered for a school site. We are -- it makes sure that when an application is filed, when something is under consideration, that the Magisterial Board members and the at-large members are informed right away and given a briefing on this so they can be part of the conversation early on. We also have outlined how we want to make sure that the community is aware very early on. We are stating here a preference that we do not want to have wireless communications facilities on elementary school property. These sites are typically smaller sites and we've had concerns voiced by the community about putting cell towers on elementary school sites. So this does state a preference against having cell towers on those sites. In doing this, I do want to let -- I want to, first of all, thank all of the advocates who have written to us and come to Governance Committee meetings and come to work sessions. We appreciate your involvement and your input as we have made our deliberations. And it's been very important to us to hear what's important to the community. In terms of how we have crafted this language, we did consult with legal counsel as we crafted the language. And it does appear that it would not be legal to have a -- an out-and-out prohibition. And so we have instead crafted language both for more and better oversight as well as stating our strong preference that these stay off elementary school sites. So with that, that's pretty much a synopsis of two years of work and I would urge the Board to approve this tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Darrenack Kofax, would you like to speak to your second?
I think Ms. Evans gave, as she said, a thorough synopsis of what we have done. Ms. Evans is the current Governance Chair. I was the chair last year when we basically, the entire year, parts of our meetings were devoted to this policy and looking over it and ensuring, hearing from the community, listening to people. And when you create policy, often people are happy about it, some people are not. But we really took our time, did a thorough analysis, and I encourage my colleagues to support what we have done. As Ms. Evans, I think you might have said, the hour's getting late. We, in addition to two years' analysis of it, we also had several work sessions on it and had ample time for discussion. So I encourage my colleagues to move this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Darrenack Kofax. I call on Ms. McLaughlin for an amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wish to propose the following amendment in which we will substitute for the pending motion the following language in Section 1 of the Purpose Section for Policy 8335, quote, "for those school division sites where facilities are approved in accordance with this policy."
Do I have a second?
I'll second for the purpose of discussion, Madam Chair.
Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your amendment? Ms. McLaughlin?
When we talked about how to provide greater clarity in Section 1, the Purpose Section, about whether or not the purpose of this policy is to obtain revenue for the benefit of FCPS, we felt it was really important for the public's stronger understanding that this section would provide additional clarity that it's not that our purpose is to offer cell towers on our school campuses for revenue into it just for its own purposes, but rather that when we've determined that it's appropriate and applicable, that a tower will be placed there for all the other reasons outlined in the purpose. We just wanted to delineate that it would, in fact, provide revenue then. And so that's -- that was why there is a language change.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, just briefly. As stated by Mrs. McLaughlin, that is to clarify the purpose behind this revised new policy that, among other things, among other things, you know, through these, you know, contracts with the wireless vendors, we do generate some revenues for the benefits of the school system. But that's not the only purpose behind having this policy. There are other benefits that are stated in this. But I think what the additional language provides clarity that this will be done only when the School Board actually approves it.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I have Ms. Schultz.
So if anybody's nuts enough to be watching us at 20 minutes to 12 on December 20th, or any time thereafter, you will have seen a number of amendments that I posted for this meeting and which were posted at a prior board meeting, which sought to take up this topic and which was deferred for a host of reasons off a prior agenda. And for reasons that I don't have a very good explanation for, to be perfectly honest, we're told we can't do any of them, that we are, for some reason, beholden to a commercial entity, so much so that we need to keep language instead of removing language that we're profiteering off of children as the policy's purpose, that we're -- our goal is to make money off of kids. And that is, of everything that is in this policy, the most offensive to me as a parent, to me as a governor of this school system, to me as a taxpayer, that the options available to commercial vendors for putting up cellphone towers will trickle down by federal law that we're going to put these at school sites to -- to make money, and we're going to profess it. This is the key. We're going to profess it in our policy. And that is a wholly repugnant thought to me. It has been the talk of much consternation among people all across this county. This does not have to do with a particular school community. It does not have to do with a particular group of parents. This is a, a relatively, actually, I don't know anybody who said, you know what, you need to keep that language in there so you can make money off the backs of kids with a commercial vendor putting monopoles, so the big, you know, the big-named telecommunications companies can make even more money. And so, a, a mild change, which was that you can establish the purpose of this policy to be what exists in the rest of the language, but merely remove that we're going to make money, that the object is to make money. And we, apparently we can't even do that. This doesn't do any, I don't even know what this means, to be perfectly honest, for the school division sites where facilities are approved in accordance. So we're going to make money for the school division sites where facilities are approved in accordance with the policy. We're not going to make money for school division sites where facilities aren't approved in accordance with the policy. Well, of course, I, you know, it's an extension of something that is inherently existent within the policy itself. So, you know, a further explanation is, we're going to make money where we put the cellphone towers, but we're not going to make money where we don't put them. So, as a preface, because it's going to come when, as soon as this passes or doesn't pass, and we go back to the main motion, and none of the rest of the contemplated amendments appear, and huge numbers of constituents across Fairfax County are going to be, I think, agog that this board didn't even discuss things that were publicly posted, not just for this evening, but for, you know, a meeting over a month ago. We're not even going to talk about it. We're not even going to talk about it because we're just going to plunge ahead, and I, I don't think that that is indicative of a school system that is the 10th largest in the nation, and which, in which I think that we can be a thought leader. We can be flexible. We can explore all legal avenues to the greatest extent that preserve and protect the children who are entrusted to us by the constituents. We are elected to serve. They are not our schools. They are not our children, and it is not our money. And yet, something that will protect and preserve our, our kids on the outside of the building doesn't seem to warrant as much muster as is possible. And if that means that, you know, we have to bring in others or look to other surrounding jurisdictions, which, for reasons that we don't really know, have, have taken a different path than we're going to take here, we should have done it. We should, we should have gone to the mat, to the maximum extent possible, to say that a commercial vendor should put a cell tower anywhere else, but the dead last resort should be where kids go to school 180 days a year, 35 hours a week, and more if, if they participate in, in extracurricular activities. So I am gravely disappointed that we, we haven't embraced a mantra that preserves our right to be innovative and flexible and not do things the way we've always done them, which is exactly what's going to happen tonight. And I won't be supporting the amendment, and I won't be supporting the main motion.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Hines?
Oh, Matt, Ms. Hines, I'm sorry to interrupt real quick. Madam Chair, Mr. Moon and I were conferring over here. Madam Clerk, the language is not exactly clear, as we discussed, so I don't want board members confused. The way it's supposed to read is, "I move to amend the pending motion by adding the following language." Because what, all that was being done is that this, this additional language is at the very end of the Purpose section, so nothing's getting changed, just adding for clarity. So if we could, if you want, I'll, may I just type it up for you, Madam Clerk? Oh, you did it? It can't say substitute, it's-
It's amend.
"I move to amend the pending motion by adding the following language," at the end of the Purpose section. Okay. So, colleagues, I just wanted to make sure you all understood. It's just adding words at the end for clarity. Sorry, Ms. Hines.
That's okay. That is clear. Thank you. I just, I quickly just wanted to respond a little bit to, push back just a little bit on the, the notion that the, the mention of revenue as one benefit of cell towers is, is somehow terribly offensive. I mean, we had a student come speak to us tonight, a high school student during citizen participation time, and talk about how, you know, the revenue stream from cell towers, which we know is not much, right, but it is, it is one of the benefits, and that, you know, it, it, we, he, his point, and I don't disagree with him, is that it's kind of a win-win, if you think about it, and that we do need it in tough economic times when we're always going to the taxpayers for more money for schools, you know. So I, I guess I would just, the idea that, you know, we're making money off the backs of kids, I, I don't think that describes what I think we're doing necessarily, so.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only comments are really to just express, and some disappointment that we can't have a fuller conversation about the various amendments that have been posted, and were posted at the last regular meeting, that we were going to make a decision on the cell tower policy, and then got deferred to this. My recollection is that when we ended our last work session, at which we did, we have discussed some of these issues that were in the motion, you know, there was a, an expectation that motion should, would be brought, you know, when it brought, the item was brought up for action, the policy changes were brought for action. But now, because of, because of advice of counsel, we've been told to not bring forward these amendments that Ms. Schultz has had up for quite some time. And so what that translates to is unfortunately a, a reiteration of the first and most fundamental complaint that was brought to my attention by the, the parents of an elementary school, and that was that they weren't being heard, and that the issues that they, the concerns that they had weren't being acknowledged and recognized and, and responded to. And in this case, not only were they not being heard, their voices are being muted, because Ms. Schultz is bringing forward exactly the topics that we have been receiving in many emails from the same folks who, who came and talked to me about that elementary school, and the same folks who came to Governance Committee meetings, and the same folks who came to our working, our work sessions. It would have been wonderful to have a conversation about, you know, what we believe about the issues that are raised in Ms. Schultz's amendments, but because we've come out tonight and are unable to bring them to discussion in front of the board, you know, we've done a disservice, in my opinion, to those parents, those citizens, who are very concerned about this topic.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'd just like to add some perspective. As one who values governance, values the comments of our colleagues, values hearing from our community, and having a disagreement about how to resolve an issue is not, I, I object to any reference that the community has been muted or disregarded, or that heard, words have not been heard, or somehow we're selling our children for profit, or any of that. But there has been extensive deliberation, taking into account comments by the community, and what is being proposed today is actually a compromise that includes a significant portion of some of those comments. And so I simply do not want to close out 20, what year is it?
Eighteen.
Twenty eighteen. I do not want to close out 2018 with the impression that this board operates in that manner. We do not always agree, but even those that I disagree with, I respect their opinions and their ability to bring issues to the forefront. And I, I, I believe that we can be respectful of one another, that we can respectfully disagree. And I, I quite frankly, am a bit concerned about some of the characterizations that might mislead the public today. And so I, I want, I just wanted to definitively say that we are very concerned about our community. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for mentioning that, you know, we did receive legal advice. And as one who is trained in the law, as much as I may not like what the law says, we have a fiduciary duty as a board to take that into account. I did not hear any sort of a motion to delay this matter, or to, you know, to move forward in a different manner. So I, I, I would say, you know, I want the public to understand that there has been extensive discussion. This is one resolution that many of us have believed considers public opinion, and certainly no one is in the business of selling out, disregarding the needs of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. I have a number of go-backs, which I am going to first call on Ms. McLaughlin, who's been waiting patiently, followed by Ms. Schultz, and then Mr. Wilson. And once everybody has spoken, I will have some comments myself.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. For the audience, I did want to go ahead and just read how the new section for the Purpose will read for clarity. So Purpose is Section 1, and it says, "to provide access to school properties for the location of mobile and land-based telecommunications network facilities for wireless telecommunications for the citizens of the county, consistent with the efforts of the Fairfax County Government to furnish appropriate coverage for the safety and security of citizens, promote wireless connectivity commerce, and to enhance the instructional programs of Fairfax County Public Schools, as well as obtain revenue for the, at, for the, for the school division sites where facilities are approved in accordance with this policy." And the reason why I wanted to read that all the way through is, as my colleagues know from our extensive conversation, I would have preferred that under-purpose, that we not make mention of the revenue aspect at all. But in looking for the spirit of compromise, in order to, what I believe, will best help the community understand the commitment that this board has to ensuring that any decision we make about these towers are going to be, hopefully for the betterment of county residents, citizens, families, who have these schools in their communities. And so this language was the compromise. I very much hope that the majority of my colleagues will support this language, because I think this prevents anyone from reading the existing language and perhaps interpreting it in a way that certainly is not the mindset of the board.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Schultz?
And good people can disagree and disagree vehemently, and still be good people. I will say that with respect to the notion that our community has, quote-unquote, "been heard," fundamentally, I, I hold that that is not, fundamentally, categorically not true. If we say that we have a, quote-unquote, "preference" that cell towers not be placed on elementary schools, we have not explained why we don't have a preference, why they're not on middle schools. We don't understand what a preference means. I don't know what a preference means. I have worked for general councils of Fortune 200 companies and written, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of, of contracts and negotiated language, and language is important. Preference? Okay, well, we have a preference. What, what, what does that, what does that set as an expectation to the community? I can't explain it. And, and I've been on the board the entire time, and I still can't explain it. And I'm not going to be able to explain it going forward. It's intentionally vague. This is not a moneymaker, a, a, while, well-intentioned, and I appreciate any student who comes out and speaks, you know, we're not making, this is not a moneymaker, per se. We are making some money, but, you know, on a $3 billion budget, it's, it's negligible, and not the way we should be making money. There has been no public hearing. There's been no public hearing on this. There has been no public hearing professed in the policy that when a cell tower is proposed to go onto a property, that we will then have a public hearing. So there's no public hearing now, and there's no public hearing in the future. So when the, quote-unquote, "public," if, if they, if they endeavored to write to us, or endeavored to come and speak in a three-minute slot at one school board meeting or other, that's not, that's not intentionality on our part to hear the public. And with respect to a motion to delay, please be assured that I made every conceivable effort, every conceivable effort, to ensure that we go and secure additional council input, look at other counties, look at best practices, look at PG accounting across the way that is no longer, you know, participating in this kind of endeavor. So, you know, every possible avenue to, this is, this is not urgent. This is not urgent business that we hurry up and get monopoles onto schools and, and jam our way forward. This is a systemic policy over time, technology changes, the law changes-
So, Ms. Schultz?
And so we have the ability, certainly, to delay, but there is no desire of this board to delay. So that's why we're not delaying.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. We, yes. Mr. Wilson, I will give you one more go-back, and then I'm going to speak, and then we're going to take the vote.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and, and thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, because I, I think you're making a very good point, which is that we should bring forward a motion to delay. So I'm going to make a motion now that we defer the decision on this policy update until the second regular meeting in January, to allow us time to take a look at the amendments and to hopefully modify them in a way that would allow us to, in content, in content, discuss them and, and have them drafted in a way that would survive legal review.
Madam Chair, may I have a point of clarity with respect to you?
Yes, Ms. Keys-Gamarra?
What would be the purpose of the delay, other than, I mean, we've looked at the-
Ms. Keys-Gamarra, let, we need to first have a second on his motion, and then we can discuss it.
For grants, sure. You know, I don't give up until I give up, so I'm never giving up.
So I, I just like-
So, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, we do have a parliamentary procedure, okay? I appreciate your enthusiasm. Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to your amendment, and then, but please be brief, given that it is midnight?
Madam Chair, and there are citizens still in the audience patiently waiting for us to finish this discussion. So I appreciate your urging to that we be brief, but I will speak to my motion, and we'll try to keep it as, as concise as possible.
So you can proceed, please.
Thank you. I, I believe that actually, the point that's made here is, is twofold. One, we haven't had the discussion at this table, at the, at this dais, when we're about to make a decision. And two, there may in fact be alternative language that would allow us to have those discussions here about the issues that the parents and citizens of Fairfax have raised to us in emails and otherwise. So I, I believe that this is a useful pause- So I believe that this is a useful pause to see if we can't come up, see if there might be a way to be able to bring these issues to the forum.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Schultz, would you like to speak to your motion?
No. In deference to my colleagues, I yield back my time.
Thank you. Ms. Hines.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Keys-Gamar, followed by Ms. Hines.
Mr. Wilson, would you also be seeking our advice with respect to alternative legal advice or anything of that nature?
I hadn't contemplated using counsel other than the counsel that we are provided, no.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Hines?
Well, I would just note that it was December 15, 2016, that Mr. Wilson and I brought this to a forum, and that's two years ago, last week. And I feel like we couldn't possibly have gone, you know, any more slowly, and I don't blame anyone for that. I know it was a lot of work. It was a lot of work, and I don't mean that people dragged their feet or anything like that. But here we are, two years later, and we have something that we're ready to vote on. I'm sure that the reasons it took this long were all legitimate and understandable, but the reality is, you know, we've got people in the community who would like this settled because when you have a policy and then people in the community know that you're working on another policy, there's a sense that everything is on hold, you know? And that's not really a good position for us as a school board to be in, where we just keep something like this, you know, indeterminate, inchoate for two years, and then we decide, when we finally sit down to vote on it, that we're going to push it off again because, you know, some...we got legal advice that some of us didn't like hearing. But, you know, it is what it is. I think we should vote on it tonight.
So with that, we have a motion on the table to delay deliberance of this policy until the second meeting in January. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I had my light on because, Mr. Wilson, I very much appreciate your amendment. You and I and other board members had talked about ways that we could strengthen this policy. But as I understood it, you know, at this point, unless you're going to get and be proposing additional outside counsel, we've been given the guidance from our division counsel, and as a result, part of where we are is finding the compromise and moving forward. So unless we're getting different legal guidance and delaying it, as much as I understand your desire, I don't know how we end up changing. Part of my amendment, which I guess still hasn't even been voted on yet...
Your motion.
No, my amendment to the motion hasn't even been voted on yet.
Correct, which is why I was going to vote...
Mine was supposed to be the best compromise that we could arrive at as a board and then move forward with a policy that I do, in speaking to this motion to delay, we got many letters of support from the public saying, "Please pass this tonight." Yes, they were in support of Ms. Schultz's amendments, and also my follow-on motion that we'll talk about later. But the bottom line is, the public knows that the policy as revised is a far better policy than what we've had. And I'm worried about the board, at this point, delaying something, spending more time on something that I don't believe is going to have a different outcome. So, Mr. Wilson, I understand that it's important for you to be able to speak to the public and your constituents, which is, you don't think we should be voting on it tonight. I do want you to know that I appreciate your wanting to communicate out that maybe we could have made this a better policy. If I thought we could change the outcome, I would support your motion that's on the table. But having heard all of our colleagues to this very point right now, unfortunately, I don't think that's going to accomplish anything, so I can't support the motion to delay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to call a question.
Called a question, okay. I am going to go ahead and call the...Mr. Wilson, what would you like to add to this?
Call the question.
Okay, the call...
Three quarters.
Three quarters. So I'm going to see a show of hands of who can support called a question. So we have Ms. Strauss, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Evans, Mr. Moon, Ms. Corbett, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchuk, Ms. Hines, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. Those opposed to the call to question, I have Ms. McLaughlin and Mr. Wilson. Those abstaining...
You voted yes.
Oh, you voted yes, I'm sorry. So with that, the question has been called. So the amendment on, or the proposal on the table, the motion, is to delay a decision on this policy until the second meeting in January so that additional discussion can take place regarding proposed amendments and possible changes. Those in favor of the motion to delay, please show your hands. So that is Mr. Wilson and Ms. Schultz. Those against? That would be Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchuk, Ms. Hines. Those abstaining? Ms. Keys-Gamar, that motion passes. So now we go...
Fail.
I mean, fails, I'm sorry. So now we will go to the amendment proposed by Ms. McLaughlin, which is as read, adding to the purpose station, a statement.
Madam Chair, I've been asking for recognition because I have something to say about the wording.
Okay, that's...so would you like to make a modification to the, or suggestion on the wording before we have a discussion about?
Yes. I wanted to stop you before you read it because as read by Ms. McLaughlin, I believe, it's just a technical thing, but I think you intend to remove the words "for the benefit of FCPS"? No?
No.
Oh, so it's just for the...
Just adding.
So for the benefit of FCPS and for those...okay, so the way you read it before, it...
There wasn't an "and." It's for the benefit of FCPS for those facilities that have been approved.
I see, okay.
So it's basically saying it's benefit of FCPS, but it's applicable to those...
I understand.
Yeah.
When you read it before, I thought you had taken out the "for the benefit of FCPS." So, all right. So I did have another, one more comment, but if you want to proceed...
Go ahead, Ms. Evans.
Okay. So I would, in addition to that, I do support this amendment. I think that this is a reasonable amendment and further clarifies the purpose. I did want to say that for those who are concerned about the location of the cell towers, we did consider this very, very carefully over the course of time, and as we had stated before at several work sessions, and worked on the best way to deal with the elementary school issue in particular. And to me, the word preference is quite clear. I don't think there's ambiguity about it at all. That is the default position, that we are not going to be placing cell towers on elementary school sites. But it does allow for situations where, after the school board members have been informed, after the public has been informed, after we've had plenty of community engagement and people have had an opportunity to weigh in, pro and con, and express their support or their opposition, it leaves open that door. But I think it's very clear that preference means that is our default position. So that's where we are, and to me, it is a strong statement.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. So if I can remind everybody on the amendment that we are voting on, it is to amend the main motion by adding the following language to the purpose section of Policy 8335, "For those school division sites where facilities are approved in accordance with this policy." All those in favor of the amended language? So I have Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, Ms. Keys-Gamar, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchuk, and Ms. Hines. Those opposed? I have Ms. Schultz and Mr. Wilson. That motion passes. Now I will read the main motion that the school board approved, the proposed revision to Policy 8335.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, I'm sorry, but for those of us who were following procedure, I only spoke to the amendment. I didn't speak to the main motion because we weren't supposed to do that until now.
Okay, so Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to the main motion?
I will, and appreciate that because, as many of my colleagues know, I've been serving on governance for several years now, and I've had the pleasure of making the sausage on everything from naming rights policies to the cell tower revision policy. And I felt it was really important, again, in brevity, being the key word at this time of night, to just make sure that, for those who are following this issue, understand the tremendous undertaking that occurred here. Prior to the revisions to the existing policy, before we vote on these proposed changes, much of the decision-making for the location of cell towers on our school properties was delegated from this board to the superintendent and his designee. And in this case, it was Mr. Plattenberg's predecessor who served in that role. And then Mr. Plattenberg assumed that responsibility. And when the community came forward and expressed concern about how towers were being placed on our school sites, they went to the planning commission, who said, "Well, why aren't you going to your school board and expressing your concerns?" And what we discovered was that the policy really didn't give the board much authority and oversight. And so I do want to take a moment to compliment and thank Mr. Plattenberg and his team, Bob Cordova, Tom Casey. The three of you really exemplify what I ran for when I wanted to serve on this board over seven years ago. And that was to truly engage and respectfully listen and meet with the community on issues of concern. And while I know there was differences of opinion at times about where we came out, the bottom line is that, Mr. Plattenberg in particular, I was on the receiving end at times in the community of bringing issues like this. And I watched how you genuinely, in our Governance Committee meetings and in your dialogue with the community, you said, "Look, what can we do to come together on this issue?" So while the proposed changes are not perfect, they didn't get us all the way to where the public wanted to be, or maybe even where some of us on the board were. But this is so much more vastly improved, and I want to thank my colleagues as well. Truly, you have all helped the Governance Committee to bring this policy to where we are going to have a lot more responsibility and ownership, and improves the transparency and accountability. And so with that, I also want to again reiterate what Ms. Evans said to our community advocates. I've walked in your shoes. I've been there for many years before I joined this board and sat on the other side of the table. And the incredible wealth of information that the community advocates brought to us as board members, especially those of us like Mr. Wilson and I, who were serving on governance at the time, Ms. Kofax, Ms. Evans, greatly appreciate the fact that this policy has changed a lot. And to my colleague, Ms. Schultz, who has concerns, I will say that the key phrase that has been in all these emails from the community is, "After two years of discussion, we implore the school board to demonstrate genuine leadership and vote yes on these policy updates to prioritize student safety over the revenues of a third-party vendor." I believe that this policy has improved. I'm not going to speak about the third-party vendor, but I'm going to speak to the fact that without question, we are engaging with the public in a much more, you know, I think, effective manner by these changes, and I want to thank everybody involved.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just note that to Ms. Evans's point on the word preference, that this board, to my understanding, has already, in a prior board, approved a cell tower on an elementary school. And, you know, this board will continue to exist in its current form only for another 12 months, and there's no guarantee that a future board would not approve a cell tower on an elementary school without the prohibitory language that was in Mrs. Schultz's motion. So while I appreciate the word preference is an improvement, it doesn't really go to the same point that Ms. Schultz is looking to put prohibitive language in there. On that point, I must say that it's my understanding that Ms. Schultz was not notified personally or afforded any opportunity to cure the drafting of her motions. And these were motions that were put forward, as I said, prior to the last regular meeting that we had this policy on the agenda. So, you know, I hope my fellow board members won't think I'm just being difficult, but that was not an appropriate approach towards one of our members who took a lot of time to draft amendments and consider changes that she thought would improve and reflect the citizens that she was in contact with and their desires. So I believe that we could have, had we chosen to delay, taken the time to allow that sort of curing potentially of her motions. As Ms. McLaughlin has pointed out, I was part of the Governance Committee when this first came to it, and has, you know, have made the long, difficult slog to get to where we are now. And I was pleased to see that the board at the work session showed general approval of the policy as it was proposed. As I mentioned, there was, you know, the typical end-of-work-session statement that, "Hey, you can always bring amendments at the table." And for us to consider, we're not considering those amendments. So from my perspective, I agree with Ms. McLaughlin. This is a significant improvement. Most importantly, I think we are allowing the parents to contact board members and get their board member galvanized, who then has the ability to bring an approval to the board. And that's a good change. I mean, that's good, that is only, you know, the issue under the old policy was that it was a difficult process to get that sort of elevation of the concerns of the community. So I support the revised policy. I think we could have made it better today, and wish that we had at least honored our process to figure out a way to acknowledge the work of our colleague.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I have Ms. Schultz and then Mr. Moon.
Just very briefly, the ability to improve the policy and the feedback that we got from the community, with all due deference to my colleague from Braddock, was hat in hand with the amendments. And I guarantee you, had this motion been put up with none of my amendments as previously posted and originally intended for discussion at the last board meeting, where this was an agenda item, all of those comments that were asking us to pass it would not have been asking us to pass it. They would have said, "Where are the amendments?" So the amendments made it better, and not by a little bit, but by a country mile in terms of being responsive. So the fact that it's a little bit better doesn't mean it's good, and I still can't support it.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I want to thank all the members who have previously, or still serving on the Governance Committee, to have worked on this particular policy for two years, over two years. You know, thank you for your tenacity and your efforts, putting in a lot of time to work on this. As one of those two board members who participated in the last time, back in 2010, when the board, you know, discussed, you know, having the existing current policy, you know, where at board at the time, you know, took a position that for cell tower issues and matters, would be the best or better to leave to professional staff rather than lay school board members to weigh in in technical decisions. This is a huge... This is a huge departure from that, and this reflects the concerns and desire of the community. And I want to thank, again, Governance Committee members to bring forward this revised, much improved policy. And I will support it, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I appreciate your comments. Before I make my own comments, Ms. Hines, I see a light on. Did you want something? Sure, go ahead. Just a little.
I just want to make sure, you know, as one of the makers of the original forum, and I just want to make sure that my comments a little bit earlier about it taking two years are not taken in the wrong light. I do understand why it took that long. I think when we first proposed it, you know, I anticipated that it would take some time, you know? And so I'm pleased that we're done and that you, that we took the time to do it in a way that makes sure we have something we can use well going forward, because this is a change in how we do business, and we're going to have to have some pretty clear guidance as, you know, the issues come up. So, thank you. I'm happy to support this.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Now, I would just like to make a couple of comments. When we talk about telecommunications tower siting, we, many of us, when you first start talking about it, you think, well, that's within the remit of the Fairfax County School Board, because we're talking about sitting towers on Fairfax County public school land. However, when we look at cell tower siting, much of the jurisdiction falls within the remit of the FCC, so at the federal level. We also have, so we have federal laws that apply to us here in Fairfax County regarding the sitting of cell towers. We also have state laws that also limit the flexibility that we, as a governing body, have in addressing things such as cell tower siting. And so from my perspective, when I look at what has transpired over the past two-plus years, which included multiple governance meetings and multiple work sessions discussing this very important issue, what we have before us is a very balanced approach, which actually puts the school board in a position of advocating and representing their constituents, much more so than the previous policy. And it does reflect a lot of input from our community to, for us to take ownership and to become involved in this very important issue. And so I think that progress has been made. Obviously, I've never seen a policy that has been perfect, and we shouldn't make perfect the enemy of the good. And as, with that, I think that this board needs to vote on this policy and have the resolve to take its responsibilities very seriously when community members come to us with any concerns that they have about a proposed sitting of a tower. And so with that, I will call the vote. I'll read the main motion that the school board approved, proposed revisions to Policy 8335, wireless telecommunications facilities as detailed in the agenda item and as amended. All those in favor? I have Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Ms. Darinak Kovacs, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchuk, Mr. Wilson, and Ms. Hines. Those opposed? Oh, and Ms. Corbett Sanders, thank you. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Ms. Schultz. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedures, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items.
Oh, Ms. Corbett Sanders, I'm so sorry. I know it's really late at night, but remember I have a follow-on motion.
You do have a follow-on motion. I apologize. It was not in my.
So, my dear colleagues, I hope this can be super quick, because we discussed it at the work session, and it's pretty straightforward. I move to direct the superintendent to review and report back to the board about the merits of engaging an independent third-party wireless telecommunications expert to consult on the evaluation of all FCPS telecommunications facility applications, including, A, validation of the need for additional wireless telecommunications coverage related to the area of the specific application, and B, recommendations to the physical placement of any telecommunications facility on an FCPS property.
Second.
Okay, with that, Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, that again, this was something that the public and the advocates did ask us to consider at the time that we went to the work session. The board felt that we needed more information about this particular part of their advocacy. So I think that either way, however we decide as a board and as a division, on the merits of what's in the follow-on motion, the objective is just for the superintendent to review and report back to the board. This would enable us to, I think, have a comprehensive response, both for the benefit of the board on perhaps this consideration, as well as provide a comprehensive response for the public's understanding. So, I hope my colleagues will support this, because again, it's asking the superintendent to review this. And I know in prior conversations with Mr. Plattenberg, even in both the Governance Committee meetings and at the work session, he did see, did say that this is something that they certainly could look into and that there could be merits to it. So I welcome being able to hear formally from him and the division superintendent. So, I hope you'll support it.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Schultz, do you want to speak? No. With that, Ms. Hines, do you want to speak to this?
No.
Okay. With that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the follow-on motion? And that motion passes?
No.
No?
Janie's not voting for it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, so we have Ms. Schultz, Ms. Evans, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Ms. Darinak Kovacs, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchuk, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Hines, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Abstaining, Ms. Strauss. That motion passes. Consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Saratoga Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Siemens Industry, Inc., in the amount of $349,120, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.02, award a contract for the Bush Hill Elementary School modular relocation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Pinnacle Construction, Inc., in the amount of $1,948,800, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.03, award a contract for the Franklin Sherman Elementary School roof replacement project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Colbert Roofing, Inc., in the amount of $179,324, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.04, award the contract for the chiller replacement at Park Lawn Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Protech Construction, Inc., in the amount of $273,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.05, confirm the separations for the period beginning November 1, 2018, and ending November 30, 2018. 6.06, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. 6.07, approve the minutes from the November 8, 2018, regular meeting. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. New business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, authorize the division superintendent and the assistant superintendent of Department of Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom may act without the other, to take all action necessary and appropriate, in consultation with legal counsel for the school division, to negotiate, execute, grant, and administer such deeds and agreements, as well as any other documents, to grant certain easements on the property of Liberty Middle School to the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, and to receive in return from the adjoining landowners, certain easements for the benefit of Liberty Middle School and the school division. 7.02, award a contract for the Northwest Elementary School new school project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.03, approve the fiscal year 2020 to 2024 capital improvement program. Superintendent Matters. Next on the agenda is Superintendent Matters, and I call on Dr. Bray-Bran.
Happy holidays and happy new year.
Board Committee Reports. I've had a request to dismiss with the rest of the board committee reports and adjourn for the evening.
Yes.
All those in favor? That passes unanimously. I wish everybody at the table and in the audience a very happy and merry Christmas. Enjoy your holidays, and we will see you in 2019. Happy new year.
12:31. Yeah. This is my.